Call to order the committee, the whole meeting for Tuesday, April 28th, 2020. First item on the agenda is roll call.
Miller?
Here.
Rosado?
Here.
Beck?
Here.
Knop?
Here.
Chantet?
Here.
Baron?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
O'Brien?
Here.
Callahan?
Here.
Meitzler?
Here.
Malley?
Here.
Uwer?
Here.
Serone?
Here.
And McFadden?
Yeah.
Okay, I think we have everyone here tonight. The next thing on the agenda is a reminder again to speak directly into whatever microphone you're using tonight, so we can get this recorded, so we have a good recording for the public to listen to, and so that everybody can hear what we're talking about tonight. Item number three would be approve the minutes for March 3rd, 2020, and March 10th, 2020. If I have any corrections, notes, anything on those? If not, someone like to make a motion for approval?
So.
Second, Uwer.
Okay, motion by Chantet, second by Uwer. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed? Okay, that passes. Next up would be items to be removed, added, or changed. Alderman Chantet?
Your honor, I have quite a few. So we have, after item six, I would like to move up some items. We have eight, nine, 10, and 11, because we recognize that some of the discussion items are going to go quite a bit if we can move those up for the petitioners. And then item number 14 is being removed because the petitioner is reconsidering what they're working on. And then I'd also like to add an executive session after 19.
Okay, what will the executive session be for? Laura, do you have that?
Yes, it will be for personnel.
Okay, and no action from that tonight?
No, there will be no action taken after that.
Okay, and so 14, which is the license agreement for use of land for the hot dog cart, that has been removed. And then do you want eight, nine, 10, and 11 before item six?
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Yeah.
So move them to five A.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
And up next then would be number five, matters from the public. Do we have anybody from the public this evening?
Alderman Wolf, I'd like to make a mention at this point.
Go ahead, Alderman Knop.
I'd like to welcome the scouts from Batavia Troop Six who are here tonight, participating, joining in with us, working on their citizenship and the community merit badge. Welcome and enjoy.
Thanks for joining. Thank you for mentioning that, Joe. Okay, then per change in the agenda, we will go on to item number eight. Alderman Callahan?
Yep, thank you, that's mine. This is for ordinance 20-31, granting a conditional use permit for a video gaming establishment in the downtown mixed-use district, 142 West Wilson Street. RP3 Group LLC, DBA Riverside Pizza and Pub is the applicant. The plan commission held a hearing for this video gaming license on April 13th and voted to approve this, I believe it was five to nothing. Background on this is they currently aren't allowed to have one there, but they're looking for the gaming application under the conditional use requirement. Who on staff has anything else to add? Is this Drew or Joel?
Yes, it is. It's Drew.
Okay, is there anything else you want to add on this one?
Just that the ordinance would have conditions in place, basically allowing us to utilize the code, and if there is any issues that arise, similar to how we recently did Funway, there's a similar set of conditions. There would be about five gaming terminals in the rear of the establishment, basically by the pool tables, if you're familiar with the layout. And essentially, there was no issues raised by the plan commission. They felt it was an appropriate use and did recommend approval for you tonight with the conditions that are in the ordinance.
Okay. Does anybody want anything to say on this one?
I'm not going to take up a lot of time with it, but as always, I wish to revisit this, and I think it's an inappropriate use in our town, so that's it.
This is Tony, I agree with Mark, didn't vote for Funway, not going to vote for this one.
This is Elliot, just going to repeat myself again, I'm not going to be supporting this.
I see Mr. Mayor's hand.
No, I was just doing some other work in here, and I made a mistake, I was calling your attention to myself.
Okay. Anyone else?
This is Joe, I'm with, I'm with the others on this, I don't think it's appropriate.
I left the meeting, question mark?
I was just going to go around alphabetically then. Alan, anything?
No, no comments.
Dan?
Hi there, sorry, my mic wouldn't work. No, I don't have any comments.
Drew?
No comment.
Jenny?
No comment.
Keenan?
No comment.
Mr. O'Brien?
You know, I'm going to support this with what's going on in the world today, we're going to be losing a lot of businesses perhaps, and I think whatever we can do to support our business community, so I will support this.
Mr. Rosado?
Yes, I will support this as well.
And Nick?
No comment.
Okay, I'm in favor of this one, because this was, they, that was why, one of the reasons why they came here, the, it was already on the books at the time they began their build-out, and they knew they had to wait the required period of time for doing so with the liquor license, and I believe they followed all the rules that were in place at the time. There's been no changes, so I will support this. Anyone else? Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this? Yes, Howard, if you see any hands?
No hands.
Is that the mayor raising his hand?
Yes, me.
Okay, I will make a recommendation to city council, passage of ordinance 20-31, granting a conditional permit for a video gaming establishment in the downtown mixed-use district, 142 West Wilson, RP3 Group LLC, DBA Riverside Pizza and Pub as the applicant. Motion by Call, yep, motion by Callahan, second by O'Brien. Jenny, roll call?
Callahan?
Aye.
No.
Malley?
No.
Uwer?
No.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
No.
Aye.
Beck, abstain? Knop?
No.
Chantet?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
And O'Brien?
Aye.
Motion carried eight to five, with one abstain.
Thank you.
Okay, next up will be item number nine, ordinance 2032, granting a conditional use permit for non-hazardous material recycling facility in the general industrial district. Alderman Callahan?
Thank you. This is, there are two as a part of this, this is ordinance 20-32, approving a conditional use permit for a non-hazardous material recycling facility in the general industrial district. Joel, if you want to take this one and explain it?
Yes, thank you very much. As you mentioned, this is for AP Grease Trappers at 1740 Hubbard. They are an Illinois licensed rendering plant, and they want to operate a grease recycling facility at this location. Their, their process is they collect grease, and then they heat it on the premises to separate out solids and water from the oil, and then the water and the solids are disposed of off-site. Staff has worked with AMP Grease Trappers, and they, we, we understand the process, we, staff doesn't feel it will pose any harm to the city sewer system. The project also includes, in addition to the existing building, the existing building is about 6,000 square feet, they propose to add 4,500 square feet. They're also going to add some improvements to the site, including parking, new pavement, and a public sidewalk. Staff requested, and AMP Grease, AMP Grease Trappers agreed to provide utility and drainage easements on the property, and they agreed to dedicate eight feet for Hubbard Avenue right-of-way. Also with this is the plat of dedication of easement and right-of-way that was mentioned previously. No members of the public spoke at the hearing, the commission felt that the proposed, that the use as proposed, and as recommended for approval by staff with several conditions as listed in the ordinance, that this can fit the area, and by a vote of six to zero with one absent, the plan commission recommended approval of the conditional use, and the recommended approval of the conditional use with the conditions as listed in the, in the ordinance. The plan commission also approved design review for the building addition and the site improvements. Also, staff notes that there is the plat of dedication and easement that is resolution Staff recommends approval of that resolution to accept that plat of easement, and staff also recommends approval of ordinance 20-32 for the conditional use as presented to include the conditions, staff recommended conditions, and plan commission recommended, recommended conditions of approval. That's it.
Thank you, Joel. Is there anyone who has any comments or questions on this one?
This is Mark, just a question, Joel, do we know if this is going to cause any, any odors or anything, if they're cooking off the soil and to separate it, is there any place, anything in control for that?
We didn't inquire about orders, and neither did the plan commission. I know that the applicant has been notified of this meeting, I'm not sure if Mr. Slager or any of his representatives are here. The city of Batavia code does not really have a control for odors other than just nuisance regulations, but I'm not aware of any odors if Mr. Slager or Dave Riendo, his engineer, is available, maybe they can respond to that? Yes.
Yeah, can, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, this is Dave Riendo, the, I'm the civil engineer on the job. The, all the recycling is going to be done inside the new addition, and there'll be, in the south end, there'll be two large overhead doors. You know, the intention would be if there was any odors, it would, it would stay, you know, inside the building.
I have one, one question. Do you, or is this, the grease going to be reused, or is it going to be sold to somebody to use for biodiesel?
Is Pat, is Pat Slager on the, on the line, listed? If not, I'll, I'll try to.
I am checking, I.
I don't see a Slager.
No.
Okay, um, he didn't, yeah, mention anything about biodiesel.
Okay.
That, yeah, in past meetings and stuff that we've had.
I was just curious, thank you.
Hey, Alan, this is.
Yes, Michael, I have a question. Grease has a real terrible smell, it's worse than sanitary sewers, and so if, if, if there is an odor escaping the building, will you have a plan B to arrest that, so it doesn't kind of foul the air around for the neighbors? That was for that engineer.
Yeah, I, I don't know the answer to that, I'm the site engineer. He, he didn't, nothing was ever discussed about that. I, I didn't.
Joel, if, sorry to interrupt, Joel, if, if maybe, since the applicant is not on the phone with us tonight, do you think we could get these answers to the odors that are being brought up in the, Alan's question regarding the biodiesel?
I will contact Mr. Slager and ask him those questions.
I guess for Mark and Alan and Mike, is this anything that you guys would want to postpone, or is moving it to city council and having those questions answered before then satisfactory to you or pending?
I'm fine with it.
Yeah, and since we have no ordinance specifically around it, it would be nice to, for the petitioner to understand what the nuisance issues could be, and what that, that could cause them in the future, if something were to come up.
And Marty, I'm, I'm, I wouldn't hold it up at all, we can get the answer, and we can make our final decision at city council, and I kind of agree with Mark, I mean, you know, as long as the petitioner understands it, it could bring him problems later, you know, and we don't, that's not our intent to, to, to make it more difficult for him, but we do have to protect the area.
Yeah, exactly. My intent is not to shut it down, my intent is just to make sure something is being done to address it. Having worked in the food industry in the past, yeah, grease is, is just nasty vile stuff that comes out of fryers, so.
Sure, and that was why I just wanted to make sure that, you know, you could have the opportunity to, if you wanted to delay it further, or if we, because we can always decide differently at council, whatever the vote is at that one.
Correct, I would just like, yeah, it'd be nice to have the answers before then.
So Joel, if we can maybe find that out sooner than later, at least get some written, and then maybe make sure the applicant is at the council to answer these questions.
Will do. One benefit of working at home is you can compose an email right.
Is there anyone else that has any questions on this one? Anybody from the public? Do we see any hands?
No hands this time.
All right, thank you. No further discussion, I recommend ordinance 20-32 to city council, approving a conditional use permit for a non-hazardous material recycling facility in the general industrial district. AMP Grease Trappers, 1740 Hubbard Avenue, Pat Slager, AMP Grease Trappers applicant.
Second, Knop.
Motion by Callahan, second by Knop, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Motion carries, we'll still keep that one on, not on consent, so that we can ask these questions. And then, piggybacking on that one, same discussion, this one is the resolution 20-67-R, accepting the plat of easement and right-of-way dedication for the same applicant and parcel. Joel, is there anything else? I believe you covered both of these together at the same time, but is there anything else you wish to add to this resolution?
No, I, I just want to point out that Mr. Slager was willing to do these dedications to get the project and the use through.
Okay, thank you. Anyone have any questions or comments on this resolution? I move we approve to city council, resolution 20-067-R, accepting a plat of easement and right-of-way dedication, AMP Grease Trappers, 1740 Hubbard Avenue, Pat Slager, AMP Grease Trappers applicant.
Second.
All in favor? Sorry, motion by Callahan, second by Knop, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes, have it. Alan, we can put this one maybe on consent?
Yeah, this one could go on consent, I think that's fine with the easement and right-of-way dedication.
Yeah, sounds good to me, okay.
Thank you.
And we're done on that one.
Next up is ordinance 20-33, grant of variance for a side setback for detached garage in the R4 multifamily medium-density district, Dan Satterfield applicant, 227 South Water Street. Alderman Callahan?
Thank you. The Batavia Zoning and Board of Appeals had a public hearing for this property on April 15th to consider the variance for this detached garage. I believe, Joel, if you would present this one?
Will do, thank you. Again, this is Dan Satterfield, who owns the property, it's a two-unit residence on the, on the property, and he wishes to replace his existing garage, it's a detached garage. The, he's requesting a variance to allow it to be closer to the side, the south property line side setback than is allowed. The R4 zoning district requires a setback of 10 feet, Mr. Satterfield is, has proposed a three-foot setback for the garage. He, Mr. Satterfield wishes to locate the garage a little bit further forward, further forward, so it would require a shorter driveway to be built, he's going to pour a new driveway with the property. The new garage would be further from the side property line than the existing garage is, the existing garage has only a about a one-foot setback. In addition to the property line setback, in the R4 district, there is another setback requirement for building separation, and these buildings must be separated by a minimum of 25 feet. In order to comply with that setback requirement, Mr. Satterfield needs to push it closer than 10 feet to the property line. Mr. Satterfield submitted a number of items in support of his application, among those, he notes that he purchased the property about 15 years ago, and this was before the zoning code had a, a 10-foot side setback or the 25-foot building separation requirement. Again, those were not in effect when he purchased the property. He also wants to locate the property where it's proposed, so it can screen his neighbor's parking area, and it also provides some usable space between the house and the garage and to the rear of the garage. He notes that even with the garage setback closer than 10 feet, it would be in keeping with other garage setbacks in the neighborhood. The zoning board conducted the public hearing, no members of the public spoke. The, Mr. Satterfield at the hearing did acknowledge and accept the staff recommendation for a five-foot setback instead of the three that he had requested. The zoning board of appeals complimented Mr. Satterfield on the design of the garage, they felt it would be a good addition in the neighborhood. The board also felt that a five-foot setback would not negatively affect neighboring properties, and it would be in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. The, the board made findings, as they appear in the draft ordinance, and by a vote of six to zero, the zoning board of appeals recommended approval of a variance for the garage as proposed to have a five-foot side setback. That's it.
Okay, thank you, Joel. Yeah, I'm going to say, just right off the bat, I think it looks fantastic, I think it's going to be a really sharp-looking garage, and I'm going to support this, but let's see, hear what everybody else has got to say.
This is Mark, yeah, I spoke with Mr. Satterfield on a couple occasions prior to him putting in the variance, and we talked about it, and the fact that, yeah, what he's trying to do there is definitely in, in character with that, with that area, it's very, I don't want to say unique area, in Batavia most areas are unique, but he, he was definitely in a situation where, being in that R4 zoning, and it's really not, you know, spot zoning is something we cannot do, but this was the best approach for him, so I was very happy to see that go through and, and be nearly what he's looking for, for that property, so I'm definitely in support of this.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, this is Elliot, I was just going to say, especially barring any contention by the neighboring properties, this is a, somebody in Batavia who's trying to invest in their properties, so I'm definitely, I'm going to support this.
Abby, I think you're the other alderperson in this ward, is there anything you wish to add on this one?
I think it's.
You're any concerns?
No concerns, I think it's great, I, I got the copies of the fight, of the newspaper articles about the fight that my, the previous owner of my house had to go through to get a variance for our garage, where it currently stands, and so I am, I'm thankful for these processes, and think, thankful for staff for getting this one through, I think it's going to look great.
Marty? Thank you, anyone else? Yes?
I, I like it, I like the idea of moving it forward and less impervious surface out there with a smaller driveway, and I don't have any problem with it being further from the lot line than it originally was, having lived on a little tiny 52-foot wide lot before, and know what kind of challenges there are to doing anything on the property, so I think this is a win-win for the neighborhood and for the owner.
Okay, thank you. Is the applicant here to speak about it? If he wishes?
Yes, he is, and he is, no. Mr. Satterfield?
I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes.
We. We can. Is there anything else you would like to add? You don't have to, but if you would like to.
Nothing to add. I mean, I just wanna get a new garage in there, and I hope you guys are okay with what's going on.
Okay. Anyone else from the public? Do we have any other hands?
Nothing at this time.
Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve to City Council ordinance 20-33, grant of variance for a side setback for the detached garage in the R4 multifamily medium density district 227 South Water, Dan Satterfield applicant? So moved, you were? Motion by you were, second by Beck. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Can this go on consent, or does it need to be on since it's a variance?
I'm not sure. I would say we, here on the side of caution, just put it on the regular agenda.
And it'd be good to talk to you.
This is Scott. You don't need to put it on regular. You can put it on consent.
Okay.
Okay.
That's fine with me.
All right. We will put that on consent?
Okay, now we will do an about-face and go back up to item number six, options for redevelopment plan for TIF number five. Alderman Callahan?
Yep. All right, thank you. As has been recently learned, the proposal to extend TIF 5 for an additional 12 years needed the full consent of all of the additional taxing bodies, and the school district did not support it. So we are back to what will we do with the current status of TIF 5, which has currently 20 years remaining on it. Laura, were you gonna take this one, or is Chris?
I'd be happy to start things off. Today, we have joining us Dave Patzelt from Shodin. And at the last meeting that Dave attended back in early March, there was an indication from some members of the, the city council that they would be supportive of seeing the retail being put back into this project. And so I'd like to allow Dave the opportunity to show you what the alteration of that design looks like and the impacts that it has on the elements of the project. So if Howard is able to give the presentation to Dave, he's got a presentation he wants to run through. And then we'll press Aiston about the proposal to create a new TIF.
Good evening. Can, Howard, can they see my screen now?
Yes, I believe so.
Yes, we can.
Great. Well, good evening, everybody. Dave Patzelt from Shodin, for the record, 77 North First Street, Geneva, Illinois. Well, as Laura had mentioned at one of the last council meetings, there was discussion, and I'll say a request, to see if I could get the retail put back into the, into the structure, even if there would be a loss of some of the parking spaces. And I, after a lot of work with the architect back and forth, I'm happy to advise you that not only did we get the retail back into the Wilson Street, but we have also made some modifications where we've picked up some second-floor office space on River Street. And I'd like to walk you through those revisions and show you what has happened to the plan. So to start with, this slide that you see gives a comparison of the, what I'll call the 2018 plan, which is this column. Hopefully, everybody can see my cursor moving. And then
Yes.
the presentation of the drawings you'll see this evening are the, the April 28, 2020 plan, and this column then represents the net change between those two plans. So for starters, we have a loss of four residential units, and as you'll probably anticipate that those residential units were mainly those residential units that were fronting on Wilson Street. The, as far as the retail component, River Street, we actually had a loss of 645 square feet, and I'm gonna show you that in the plan. Reason of that loss is mainly due to bringing down a stairwell to get this second-floor office space that is also on River Street. So that's mainly why we lost that retail square footage on River Street. On Wilson Street, you can see that we've picked up 9,100 square feet of retail. So our net add is 8,455 of retail space. As I mentioned, we did pick up some office space on the second floor facing River Street. That office space amounts to about 2,370 square feet. And then our parking tabulation, we have a loss of 32, 32 parking spaces. So this gives you an idea of numerically what's happened, and I'd like to walk you through the plans now. Over on the lower left-hand corner of the slide, in each of my slides, that represents what I'll call the 2018 plan, and the main portion of the slide here is the current version. The biggest difference that you'll see on this site plan is down here along Wilson Street, where we had the four entries, the four individual entries and sidewalks going into each of the four residential units. And then off to the far east was an entry to the public, public parking garage. So as you now look at the new plan, the red open triangle, that represents garage entry, pedestrian entry points. That entry point, since remained at the same general location. However, out in front, the individual entry points to the residential units are now more or less hardscape or, I'll say, concrete surface for the retail fronting units. The other significant change is up off of River Street, which you heard me mention about, an access point off of River Street, and that is the stairwell that will take you to the second-floor office space, as well as we were able, with that access point, we picked up another access point to the garage. Previously, we only had an access point off of what I'll call the far westerly corner onto State Street out of the, out of the garage. That was really this access point that you could, if you're going to River Street, to come in and out of the garage. So this is another benefit of that plan, that you now have an access point directly out onto, out onto River Street. To take you through on the, the lower garage plan, again, this is the, in the lower left-hand corner is the 2018 plan. You can see generally we had the retail off along River Street. There was no intermediate access point, and you can see now retail both north and south of that stairwell that is taking you to the second-floor retail, as well as it takes you into the lobby for the elevator to take you to the second floor of the retail, of the, I'm sorry, of the office space, and take you to the second floor of the, of the parking garage. The area that you may recall we had difficulty with, with the diving down and getting into bedrock along Wilson Street now remains an, an unexcavated area because of the hardship of trying to get underneath that, that retail. So that, for those of you that were involved in what I'll call Plan One, may, may recall that we had that bedrock issue and had it, in essence, dive down or lower the garage to get under the, under the retail. Along to the north, our driveway access points remain the same, and we still have the pedestrian access points shown to the, to the garage. Going to the upper level of the parking garage, immediately off of River Street, you can see this is where we picked up the, the office space. And here is that stairwell coming in off of River Street, and then elevator access to not only the office space, but also out to the, the second level of the, of the parking garage. Along Wilson Street, you can see we have one, two, three different floor elevations of the retail. That those, that retail space is, in essence, is stepping up the hill, and the space in the center and the space on the right could really be split into two users if, if we had smaller users, they could, that could be split. The user on the, I'll call it the west end, because of the significant grade change, and you'll really see that in the elevation, we, the closest we could get that door is generally in the center of the space. So really, that's gonna have to be one, one larger tenant in that, in that space, unless there was a step within the tenant's space, which, for ADA reasons, that can make it, that space rather difficult or a challenge to use. Again, off to the right of that retail space is the access for the pedestrians into the stairwell and into the two levels of the, of the parking garage. The residential unit plans and that floor plan up above generally remains the same. Nothing really changed up there. Going to the building elevations, as you've seen in some of the presentations in the past, the lower slide represents the 2018 building elevation. The upper portion of the slide represents the current version of the plan, and we have only colored that area that really is changing. So if it is shown in black and white, or gray tone, that, that portion of the elevation is really not, not changing whatsoever. So you can see that we, the, at the lower portion of the slide, you'll see that there was the four entry points to the, to the individual residential units with more residential styled windows, I would say. And now in this current elevation, we're back storefront appearance all along Wilson, Wilson Street. Looking at State, State Street, the north, the north elevation, again, the lower portion is the 2018 elevation. The upper portion is the 2020 colored area representing some changes. And really, this just amounted to some window, window sizing, window, window placements, and mainly the, a window over off to the right-hand side here next to the public access to the parking garage, there was a larger window and room beside that, and that space is now, is now gone. So not, not much change there. There was a little bit of a modest height increase due to the, due to the structure and trying to get the, the office, office space onto the, onto that upper floor. Looking at the Washington Street elevation, the east elevation, not, not much has changed here. The stair, there's a little bit of modification. I don't know if you'd really pick it up. Really, the architect wanted to point out that the, from Plan One to Plan Two, there was a, it was always confused, everybody about these balconies or porches that you are gonna see kind of on the 45-degree angle coming out of that, coming out of that space. They're still there, but that elevation just really confused everybody. So we tried to clean up the elevation to get a more realistic look of what it would, what that would look like. The River Street elevation has changed ever so slightly with the addition of a door here that's somewhat hidden behind the, that tree, and that is the stairway access going up to that second-floor retail, which these, this ribbon window or ribbon of glass is the second-floor, second-floor of retail. You can see that this portion, generally, I'm gonna call it from the, from that sill that ran across, which was at the same elevation here at the lowest portion of the, of the windows, is really where you picked up a little bit more mass or height of the, of that portion of the building. Keep in mind, on top of that building area is where the pool deck is, and that's the outdoor, outdoor amenities space. So in essence, that retail, I'm sorry, office space is now underneath the, is now underneath the pool. If you're looking at the floor plan of that space, this line or dotted line at the office space represents the, the pool footprint. So the ceiling of this office space will not be totally flat across. It's gonna have a, I'll call it a larger indentation into the ceiling space of the swimming pool. So it's not 100% ideal, but the ceiling underneath this swimming pool will still be about an eight-and-a-half-foot high ceiling. It's concrete, so you won't be able to see swimmers swimming up there. It's not like you'll be in an aquarium, but it does create a little bit of a challenge for the, how this space will be laid out, and whenever a tenant were to come in there, they'll certainly be able to know that that concrete structure there is, is holding the pool. So that, in essence, the presentation of the, of the plans, I, again, I think it's a big positive that we picked up the, the retail that was several had asked or desired or wished for. And I think the office spaces on that second floor of River Street is another new definite, definite plus, plus to the plan. With that, I'll turn it over if there's any questions for anybody, or if, I didn't know if Chris or Laura want to pick up discussion about the DTIF or RETIF.
Alan, up to you, whether you would like to, or Marty, what, what direction would you like to go? Would you like to discuss the feasibility of creating the TIF 6, and then ask questions about everything, or would you like to pause here and ask questions about the design that's being presented?
Yeah, I think obviously we've got to decide. We have an existing TIF 5 that has 20 years left. So does what was presented to us tonight fit in under the existing TIF?
It clearly does not.
Okay. Anyone have any questions?
Will it fit under a new TIF?
Yes.
Okay, that's, I guess, that's the big question for me.
Yeah, the big problem is the time that we lost because of the delays that arose.
So a couple of questions. This would be, a TIF re-TIF would theoretically gain the additional three years. How long would the process be to DTIF and then go through the re-TIF process?
Chris?
Yeah, yeah. Hello, Alderman. Our hope is that we can have this done late this fall. There are, there's a couple processes that have to go on. First of all, we're seeking the direction from council through the COW to agree that the staff undertake this initiative, which is essentially to expire TIF 5, terminate it, and, and then create a new TIF 6, which would include all of five, and then some selected parcels surrounding five, and take that property, all of it in aggregate, and study it pursuant to state statute, which requires an eligibility study be done to prove that you meet certain criteria to establish a TIF. That study would probably take, let's say, a month. And if we complete that study in a month or six weeks, say, we'll know what area is eligible under the statute to be declared a TIF based on its to be declared a TIF based on its, we would call it conservationary TIF characteristics. In other words, it's not blighted per se, but it's trending towards blight. And now, you know, but for an initiative that would stimulate redevelopment, we feel that the tendency towards blight would continue, and it would be in worse shape than it is now, you know, short of private investment. And so we, once we studied the area, assuming it all can be made part of the TIF, or if not, some form or format is TIF eligible, we would then go about writing a redevelopment plan for that area. And then thereafter, we would take it to a public hearing and go through the joint review board process. But the statute's very clear that certain things have to happen in sequential order and with given timeframes where it's listed not before, but no later than. And then the next process, not before, but no later, there's notifications and whatnot. But we think predicated on a four to six week maximum eligibility study, and then about that much time redevelopment plan, we can have a TIF, a new TIF in place, ready for council's consideration for designation, certainly before the end of the year and probably closer to, prior to Thanksgiving. What that does is, I'm not going to say that Shodin will break ground this year under this condition. If we can accelerate the plans, all the better. But I'm trying to be conservative because before Shodin breaks ground, he's going to want to have his redevelopment plans, you know, ready for construction documents. And then there's a certain amount of time that must happen during the construction document development, and then review and approvals of the city. So with that said, and I don't, you know, my thinking is that he probably won't, Dave can speak to this, undertake the cost and expense or expense and resources to create construction docs before the TIF is in place. Or at least, let's say, before the TIF is in place. Then it's full steam ahead. So it'd be disingenuous for me to say, oh, look, we're probably stoking for a November groundbreaking. I, I think that's, if not ambitious, it's not possible just because there's a certain amount of time that must take place before we can go to the council to actually designate the TIF. And again, that's not just by logistics, but by statutory requirements. I might be ripe to ask the question tonight, Dave, I don't mean to sandbag you, but if we do create a new TIF, I would like to think we'll have a, an agreement as to a redevelopment agreement that would bring you to a closing date on the property and, you know, breaking ground. Does that make some sense?
It, it, it does, Chris. And I guess just so everybody's fully aware of it, I would like to push the DTIF and RETIF process as quick as we, as quick as we can. The architectural construction documents are, are in the range of $500,000 to $600,000. I wouldn't, as Chris pointed out, I, I don't feel comfortable spending $500,000 to $600,000 on a set of construction plans if we don't know that the TIF is, the TIF is approved. To the timing to get those plans completed, once we tell the architect to, to draw it, I'm going to say is 90 to, 90 to 120 days. So the sooner we can get through the DTIF and RETIF, the sooner we can get the plans drawn, started to be drawn and, and, and get in, get into, into, into construction. So I think that is answering your, your, your question, Chris. But the, the challenge, it'd be nice to start drawings now, but not knowing if a TIF is going to, a new TIF is going to be created, that it doesn't make sense to spend that kind of money on a set of plans that we may not be able to use.
And that's where I think I've still got, I still have a couple more questions for Chris regarding, as you were talking through some of the, the statutory language. And you had mentioned that the area is trending towards blight. However, when this was created in 2016, we, we knew what those facts and circumstances are. And there were buildings there. Since then, the area has been demoed and is cleared of all of those buildings that would have been in there, that would have constituted more than 50% of the, of the buildings over 35 years. So we don't necessarily have the same conditions anymore. We have more green, greenfield land than, than we did when the TIF was created. So I'm trying to wrap my hand, head around how we could statutorily recreate, do another TIF if those, those conditions for the blight have been removed.
That's a good question. And under the conservation area TIF statute or section of the statute, you need to prove the first point you made. At least 50% of your buildings in your proposed area, principal buildings, are 35 years or greater. Under the proposed TIF district that was part of your memo, I think it's in test your memo, we meet that threshold. So that's a gimme, you have to have that. After that, then there's 12 criteria set forth, actually 13, but one of them's kind of double. But there's certain criteria set forth, of which you only need to be three to be conservation area TIF eligible. So where you would once had blighted buildings, say on the, the church property and Frydenalls and perhaps the old service master as examples, you now have vacant parcels, which are under, by definition, underutilized, under TIF standards. So we've also got another condition there that we didn't know about, and that's environmental issues on that piece. So if nothing else, that's actually net gain in terms of the conditions. Now, we do look at assessed values over time as one of the conditions. What I've done preliminarily in taking just kind of a windshield survey, I've extracted all the city-owned properties. Because in my view, to compare EAV under the new conditions, Marty, as you've explained, is kind of putting your finger on the scale a little bit because a lot of properties, EAV drops precipitously because we bought them. And now they're exempt. And so to say, well, the EAV is dramatically declining and include the city-owned properties, doesn't seem, it, it just seems like they're kind of weighing unfairly. So I would not utilize as one of the conditions, EAV, if the city-owned properties were the cause of the EAV drop. So we have considered, to answer your question, the change in conditions. But we're adding parcels. In our proposed district, there's as many as 36 parcels. We're not sure they're all going to be included in a TIF. We hope they are, but quite frankly, if they are not, if they don't, if they don't promote the position that this is a blighting area, then it's not consistent with the spirit of the statute to throw them in there. So what you've got in that attachment to the memo is the maximum amount of parcels to be included in TIF six. Just so you know, it's possible that after the eligibility study is considered, we can't include some of them. But we thought we'd start big and then pare down in our study, then vice versa. But just so you know, we are considering existing conditions post this city's acquisition and demolition when evaluating the eligibility of the proposed TIF area.
So two, two more questions. During the discussions for the TIF extension, there was a question that that was the recommended plan of action because those expenditures that we have had under TIF five would not be transferable to TIF six for reimbursement. Is that correct? The purchase of the properties, the demo, the land acquisition?
If, if I could just chime in, the, the purpose of seeking the extension was because extending the TIF would give us the opportunity to be reimbursed. I will check, get you an answer on whether creating the TIF six, if that we could still recover our expense in property acquisition and the utility work that we've already done. But certainly, since we haven't even begun the environmental remediation, that would still be creating this slightly larger TIF increment area would offer us the opportunity at least to recoup the costs of the environmental remediation, if not the costs that we have already incurred. Am I stating that correctly, Chris?
Yeah, I, I think we'd like to get a legal opinion on whether costs that have been incurred prior to our initiating the new TIF, which includes the inducement resolution, are going to be eligible under TIF six. I can't say specifically now. I'd like to get a retained attorney to give their position. This may have been litigated in court, for all we know, and I don't know that. But I do know any costs that have not been incurred to date and, and once we've been do, passed the inducement resolution, that we're going to be undertaking a TIF are going to be eligible. It may be that those costs that the city incurred as we were creating TIF five, those may not any longer be eligible for reimbursement.
Right, and that was why I brought it up, was because that was, that was pointed out as a con during the discussion of what we could do since this no longer was financially viable in the current TIF, that one of the options being a TIF re-TIF before the 12-year extension, because that would have added the three years that I think was being proposed that would be necessary. And one of the things that scared me about the TIF re-TIF at that time was all those things that we had hoped to recover were, I believe Laurie had said that it was no longer able to be recoverable. And that gave me pause of, is that even being an option at that point? Because that's always been one of those things that this was going to be net zero for us and gain.
Even under the former TIF five scenario, Marty, I, I think I opined during our meeting that I don't believe, I think we'd be hard pressed to reimburse the city for the acquisition of the Baptist Church site because that definitely predated the TIF five initiative. But admittedly, acquiring Frydenalls property, acquiring the Dennis property, you know, those, those costs, you know, we'll have to review it to find out if the city can reimburse itself. Now that said, without those properties, we don't have this project. So, you know, whether we get reimbursed for it or not, I'd like to think that that's not the definitive cause, whether we move forward or not, because this project has to have that land, and we've already purchased it. So, you know. Short of that, because as Laura indicated, without the new TIF, we don't have this project. The other alternative we had, there really was three. The extension, which we recognize is not going to happen now. The other was keep TIF far the way it is, but shrink the project. And then the third was re-TIF re-TIF. So if we want this project, and quite frankly, in my opinion, I thought Shodin's response to the request from council to integrate back the retail and, in this case, the additional office, which I think not only makes that facade more attractive, but also creates daytime population and, you know, generating employment and, you know, some economic development with it. I thought the response in this composition of land use within the building was a good, is a good one. And it makes me think the project's better than the last time we looked at it. So I think the opportunity's out there, but Marty, you, you make a good point. I think it's, it's a, it's a question that although we can't answer definitively, I think we may not be able to recoup those costs associated with the Frydenall, Service Master, and the Dennis acquisition.
Yeah, and I, I think that the recovery of the price for the First Baptist Church is a little news to me because I've been saying for four or five years now that that is one of the huge bonuses for me, is that was written off years ago. And I've said that publicly at meetings, and it has never been, I have not been corrected on that, that that was a huge bonus for the community that we were recovering monies that were spent on property that was purchased years ago, even before I lived in this town.
I would say that we are in terms of, it's not so much that we are going to get paid back for the expense of that through the TIF. Rather, purchase that property offered us the opportunity in addition to putting together the continuous properties to have the redevelopment site that made this opportunity possible.
Okay, and then just lastly, real quick, who would be doing the TIF eligibility for this? I know Chris's contract is running out. And in our discussions for later tonight, we're considering not hiring for the economic development person. So who would be running this TIF re-TIF?
It would be my recommendation that in light of if we are going to take this action, it really does not make any sense whatsoever to have someone start from scratch. There is so much knowledge of what came before that I think that it makes good sense to extend Chris Aiston's contract in order to bring this one home.
Okay, I just, I wasn't sure. I didn't know if Chris was retiring and going to Aruba and put him on the job.
I am going to Aruba, but because of these virtual meetings we're having, I've checked the internet connection in Aruba. No, does, more seriously, Laura and I have talked about at the end of May for my existing contract to expire, but we're discussing an opportunity to reduce and more focus my contract on kind of retainer basis to work on this project. Is that fair to say, Laura?
Yes, it is.
Yeah. And I'd be willing to, if this were to move forward, to work, you know, whether it's time and material or whether it's project-specific or a retainer, at least through the end of this TIF designation. But the, the terms and the details haven't been discussed. But to answer your question, if that's the case, it would be in-house via my independent contract with the city, but working closely with, with Scott's team in community development, particularly on the redevelopment plan itself.
Yeah, my staff would be helping with a lot of the grunt work involved in, you know, assessing the buildings and that type of thing. So I mean, we did that on TIF four and TIF five. So that would be, you know, part of our cost savings since we do that stuff internally.
The other is Anthony has been doing a tremendous amount of work on this, already investigating information about the other parcels that we would like to propose included in a new TIF six.
Anybody have any questions, comments? You, Larry?
Hey, Marty?
Mike, go ahead.
Yeah, hey, Chris. First, you know, to Dave Patzel, thanks for this redesign. I think this is, this is beautiful work. I think it should make most everyone pretty happy. It is the big draw, or the big pushback was the loss of the retail. And we got to put back along with that, that office suite. So that, I think that's a very good part to this. I guess my concern is, Chris, we've, we've always stumbled upon roadblocks. What roadblocks can we expect when we re-TIF?
Well, of course, we still have to go to the joint review board. But at least it's under the city's authority. Whereas at the extension plan, we needed consent to the other TIF districts. We didn't prevail on that. But under a DTIF re-TIF, that's solely in the authority of the city. Now, if it goes to the joint review board and they Now, if it goes to the joint review board and they, in the majority recommend against it, then the council has to vote in a super majority to approve the district. But it's still just advisory from the JR B. So you don't have to take their recommendation. Uh you can still approve it, so it's in your authority to create this new TIF. So that stumble block, I don't believe is, at, at least it's not uh something that is fatal. We can get past it. We could find out that some of the properties in question uh don't add to the eligibility study and instead, because you need a predominance of the conditions throughout the district, but instead they act, you know, in such a way as to minimize the conditions you need to prove up and we'll have to take them out of the proposed TIF. And I think we're prepared to consider that naturally. So that, that might be a block in that in terms of the eligibility study, but there are ways of mitigating that problem by eliminating certain parcels as long as you have in the main one contiguous area to establish a TIF. Uh you may get property owners not wanting to be in a TIF. All that really is is an education pro, prospect. First of all, they're not required to consent, but of course you want them to agree to be part of a TIF. And all you gotta do is educate them why a TIF is a good thing if you're a property owner. It puts you in a unique position to obtain public funding to assist you in redeveloping your property. Questions always, well, then my taxes will go up. The answer is always your taxes go up no matter what. If you improve your property and the value goes up, your taxes go up. The difference when a TIF, that increase in taxes go into this increment fund of which you are one of the few people that can get access to those dollars. So frankly, people that understand TIF, and I know you guys do some preaching the course, but they know there's a benefit to having your property in a TIF district. So the only other real problems I see perhaps are from the other districts saying, wait a minute, you know, some of these properties, especially those that are in TIF one, uh they're coming back on the tax rolls, you know, in short order. Uh release the hounds on those, you know, why are you going to take them out of uh our funding uh prematurely? And uh, and so I, I get that and we'll have to discuss that, you know. But the hurdles, at least Mike, the hurdles that we've found thus far, we think we're past. We're not going to find out more problems about property acquisition. We're not going to find out more problems about environmental conditions. We've got a plan now that's gotten to such level of detail where we believe from a structural perspective, it can be built. So a lot of stuff in this loss of quote, loss of three years. You know, we've been educated and makes the property more development ready. We've also got, as my final note to answer your question, we've got a rap, a re, you know, a remedial action plan that's been approved by uh the I E P A, and that's sometimes a six-month experience. So that's done now. So you know, it's easy to say it's silver ready, but it's getting pretty darn close.
Marty?
So, so Chris and, and Dave, the financials will all be in, in order also, so there won't be a delay?
Well, that's a good question, Mike. Uh we still need for Shodine to get the construction docs to the point where we know that you have to know what your costs are going to be, you know, your, your uses of the funds as well as your sources. So we still have to meet balance on will this pay itself off? We knew it was well short if we kept the expiration date where it is at 2040. Uh we weren't going to make it, but with three more years of increment, we feel, you know, not absolutely definitively uh, it's not known that it will pay itself off, but it certainly is a much better position than it was under the formative expiration date. And you know, we'll, we'll have to look at that again as we move along. But uh we're, we're certainly better off than we were. We bought three years on paying off the debt and um we think that will solve the problem.
And the belt suspenders and another belt are still there.
Yes, I say, yes.
Mike, it's, Mike, it's nice to jump in a little bit uh on your question regarding uh the cost. Believe it or not, our lender um that was on the project when we uh went over, when our budget was not in line, uh pre uh COVID virus was uh still very, very interested in the, uh in the project. Um I have discussed some of these revisions with him and they are very, very, very interested in uh still in the, uh in the project. One of my concerns still is, although it's great to see the retail back on Wilson Street, it, the ultimate question is, is are we going to be able to rent it? And that, that was a concern early on and now with the, you know, the whole virus, COVID virus and what is going to happen to retail and small mom and pop uh type, uh type retail, which I think this space lends itself to, that it, it, it's, it's still a risk. Um but I, 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 I think there's going to have to be in incentives for retailers, restaurateurs uh to come into these downtown, you know, downtown areas. So offering a, the sales tax rebate or something to them to try to help them get started, I think is still a, a question that's going to have to uh, uh there still be, uh be out there. Uh and now maybe more so than ever uh with what we've, uh what we're have to come here in the next several months after the uh, uh we can get back to some uh normality. The office space, I, I, I told uh in a meeting with staff, I said, you know, that's great. You know, I think the space looks great. And, but my question to them was, do you think I can rent the space? And you know, and, and so it, it's about getting, getting those tenants into those spaces. I had no problem whatsoever thinking that we'd be able to rent, uh, uh rent the residential component. But it, uh, that, it, it's still a concern. So I don't want you to think that we have tenants lined up, ready to go into this retail space or the office space. So that's where a, there's a risk or a hurdle there.
Dave, you make a good point on that with the retail. And you know, we, we, we kind of deal with that a lot anyway, trying to get, you know, businesses to move into our downtown. So it's something I don't think we should take off the table. I think you're correct in that. I don't know, what, what is, what are your thoughts on, on, again, I'm, I'm anxious for shoveling the ground. I'm, it looks to me like if everything goes the way Chris was kind of explaining it, that we'll be putting a shovel, you'll be putting a shovel in the ground probably in June or July. Is that about accurate?
My, uh, my, Mike, my, one of my fears that I conveyed it to Chris is that the way this project has been going, I, 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 my gut, my gut tells me in reading the tea leaves is that I would have had a lender here, uh you know, within the next month, two months, uh that was really willing to lend on, on the project, but I can't with a, a $3 million shortfall. Basically, the uh round numbers were the, the increment of a million dollars a year for the three years that were short is $3 million. At that $3 million loss, uh it, it's not going to happen. So the, the only way to get uh the project to happen is to, to get that time back. I wish, I, I really wish that there's a way to get this DTIF and re-TIF done. And I, I'd hate to bring up another community, but we started a foundation in late, uh, I'll say, uh, late fall and we had great success. Um and the project is going well and um, you know, the, the winner held off for us. So I, if, if Chris could work his magic and get this TIF done, I still don't want to give up on, you know, starting in uh 2020.
Wow. Well, that's, that's, that'll be something else. I, I just think it's, it's an awful big push, but let's uh see what we can do. I'm, I'm all for it. I, I support it. Thank you, Dave.
I think I heard uh Joe at one point. I forgot my question. Okay, uh, anyone else?
I, I'll, I'll jump in. This is Nick. I, I just, I, I don't necessarily have any questions. This is a, a, a lot of information and there's a lot of alternatives. I, I think it would be in best, our best interest as a, as a committee to kind of review these. I, I'm, you know, while I know we requested the retail and, and I love it and I love the looks of this, I am concerned about the drop of 32 parking places. And if he's concerned about renting out the retail space, we've got retail space open. Um is that the right move? I, I, I think it's worth discussing more in depth and really getting um everyone's opinion on, on where they feel and where they fall between, you know, Plan A and Plan D. Not to, you know, I think we can put something on the books quickly and, and really get through it. I think we're, we're so close, but there are, I don't want to just jump into it because we're getting tired. We're giving up a lot too in, in this plan and, and I do like the looks of it and, and appreciate it. Is this what everyone thinks is best? Uh I haven't heard that from everybody. It seems like we're, you know, a couple speak up and not everyone says, yeah, this is, this is the direction we want to go. So I'd, I'd be very curious to hear that or, or I'd feel better if I knew it was full consensus that giving up those parking places and going retail is uh, is the best move.
You know, Nick, that's a valid point, that, very valid point. But you know, Dave, when he talked to us and, and, and I, and I, I agree with you, Nick, we should hear from everyone. But Dave did tell us, we're gonna have, you're gonna have to lose something. And there was a big pushback a year ago to lose retail. I mean, I was always one to say retail will follow if we lost the retail in this building. I, I, that's what I thought we should have done originally. You know, so we, we had Dave kind of bend it around and move it around a couple of times. Uh you know, we can't keep asking him to, to bend it around and move it around. I mean, so, so we should have the discussion. I agree with you, but we, we really do need to make a final decision and live with it. I, I just, so I, I, and I fully understand where you're coming from, but you know, we, we've covered, this has been covered ground already.
Well, yeah, uh, hang on just a second. I was just going to say, you know, the whole, what Nick was saying about letting everybody know. I think that's utterly important at this point because we're talking about bending around and moving around a project that if I heard correctly, saying 2020, but the bottom has not dropped out of everything that we know is going to happen. It's going to cost us time, staff energy, uh finances to, for studies, for TIF studies. Uh we're talking about in a little bit, $5 million trying to find when we don't know what our, what our loss is going to be at this point. So I do adjust what Nick said. I think we need to really think about what we are doing here. And so I'll just go around alphabetically per the chart. Just Abby?
Um, yes, I agree that I, I want a bit more time to kind of chew on this. I, I'm not concerned about the 32 parking spots. I'm also not, I think it's hard to compare the vacant retail space that we have in our downtown to what's being proposed here. So I'm also not necessarily concerned that that's a, that that's an indicator of a difficulty of filling these spots. And what else have I jotted down here? You know, I've been, I've been a fan of seeing this go through um because I think it's the right tone to set for redevelopment in downtown Batavia. That said, you, uh, it's, I, I still have some questions. I still have some things I just need to chew on a little bit before I feel confident that it's the right thing to do. But um, but I'm not concerned with parking and, and I don't think it's comparable to the other vacant space.
Uh this is Nick. If I can jump in, Abby, what, uh, I'll, I'll lean on you a bit to make me feel more comfortable with that loss of parking. Where is that, is, is that opinion based or numbers based or where, where do you get your comfort level with?
Um, well, I've, I've seen around town the, um, and from our comprehensive, not the conference plan, the downtown redevelopment plan that told us that we have an oversupply of parking. I know that the Shodine plan did indicate that there was at this site a um, or in this area parking shortage at peak time of, what was it, like 120 spots or something like that? I, I am still all for the discussion about removing parking minimums, um letting developers park their building and determine what the market can support. And, and there's other parking surrounding this area. I think we're asking a lot of a single block if we're trying to put in enough parking to park the whole area, um which has always been kind of one of my holdups about, about the TIF money being, you know, going towards this big parking garage. Um I, I don't think downtown Batavia has a parking problem. It has a parking perception problem. And so the loss of the spots, I, I don't think we would miss them as much as we think.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with a lot of that. My, my concern is that supposedly our benefit is that we're getting a public lot. If it, if it parks itself or doesn't park itself and there's none left over or there's, you know, a couple, we're not getting the benefit. So.
Yes, that's exactly the, the, the part that I'm having heartburn about it too. I mean, part of me has heartburn about, you know, putting up a, it's not like me to, to fight for a parking garage in general, which is kind of what the, the, the crux of it is. Um but you're absolutely right. It's um, it then becomes a lot of money to pay for a private parking garage.
Can I just chime in for a moment? Um, one of the things that is going to be part of all of this as well is another amendment to the redevelopment agreement. And uh that redevelopment agreement is going to um contain what exactly has agreed upon to be built. Maybe tonight, what I'm hearing is something like this, is, is what we would like to see built. If we may tweak it in some ways, but for purposes of tonight's discussion, maybe we could just give the direction um to staff to sue the DTIF re-TIF versus option three, which is just leave TIF number five in place.
Laura, this is, I, I didn't mean to cut you off there, Laura. Uh this is Dave, but I, I agree with you. Uh as the developer, I think I am saying I have two options. Nick kind of referred to it as Plan A or Plan B. I'll say, you know, the plan that's approved with the, with residential units on Wilson, that plan is acceptable to us, we'll, we'll, we will build that plan or this plan is acceptable. In the meantime, to build either plan, we know that we need a TIF, a DTIF and a re-TIF. So do you march down that path? And yes, we have an RDA that we'd have to amend. We'd have to go back to historic preservation for their, uh, their approval. Then eventually come back in front of the city council for approval of the, uh, of these building elevations. So um, uh, we, we could have another special meeting or another, another evening, discuss which plan each of the two like, but I think ultimately uh you don't need a plan if you don't DTIF and re-TIF.
Well, and I think, uh, you know, kind of as Laura had said, we haven't heard from a lot of people and I still want to hear from a lot of people because there could be another third option, which is neither of those things actually work and a different project that works within the scope timelines of TIF five could exist. Because it may be not be the project, but some of the other things that we could be giving up, which are possibly the, uh, not being able to recover our costs by going to a TIF six. So maybe there's a rework, something that can get into TIF five. But those are things that I think we need other people to also weigh in on for the holistic, like Nick said and Abby said. Alan? But those are things that I think we need other people to also weigh in on for the holistic, like Nick said and Abby said. Alan.
I, I guess.
Oh, go ahead, Alan. Sorry.
I guess my thought has always been in this. If we do not build the project of the size and scope of the one we have in front of us, whichever, you know. Uh, retail or non-retail you like, um, it's gonna be smaller. If it's still within the timeframe of TIF five, it's probably not going to pay back the city for their costs. Um, because whatever gets built is probably only going to have enough time if it's a smaller project to generate enough. To induce a smaller project and not get us any size of a parking garage out of it. I, I guess I'm still of the, the mindset that. If this is what we want for downtown, if we want to bring people downtown and we want to. Figure out how to boost downtown by putting people down there and then inducing. The, the retail side to come, whether it's in this building or another one within a block or two of this. We need to do this. We need to DTIF and RETIF to give us the opportunity to create as much increment as we can. And that's really where I'm at. Um, I don't know if there's any other real options other than a smaller project. And I don't know that a smaller project ever pays the city back. That's where I'm at.
And that it would take to get the replacement project, you would lose that much more time on the TIF.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, Dan.
Can I jump in?
I know, I know Marty, you want to hear from more council members, but I just want to say, in my opinion. The last chance we had to, uh, pay ourselves completely back was when the TIF extension was ruled out. Because that would add as much as twelve years. Um, I think that horse has left the barn. We'll try to get months back as we can. Uh, but you know, the fact is, is. Uh, we needed, even from the very beginning, when we created TIF five on a twenty-three year basis. It was a long shot to pay ourselves back. If you remember, those were the last costs we're gonna get paid. And that's if the TIF performed above and beyond our estimates, which we actually felt it might because our increment estimates were low. But we were just gonna be happy to pay off the debt on the bond issue. Uh, but once that twelve years was lost, I don't see even starting all over in twenty-three years, even with this project. If they were even considered eligible expenses, the acquisitions and the demos. I don't think we would have gotten to it before the TIF increment ran out. I mean, that's just the math on it. So in my opinion, if you really want to be paid back, uh, these costs. You're gonna have to go with a smaller project and even then that also is gonna be a smaller increment. So it, you, it may not happen without, I don't think it would happen unless you get that twelve years and you're not gonna get that.
Uh, Dan.
Yeah, I was, uh, I was just gonna echo, um, Alan's remarks. Um, I've been on board with this project. Uh, through its many iterations and I guess I would say, um, I recall racing out of the meeting on my way to Mexico. Uh, and saying, geez, if we could find a way to get this thing back to a little more retail, I don't think you have enough. Support at this table and it sounded like the group did seem to come together. Um, again, and, and become a little more excited, um, and, and, and I guess coalesce. So, um. I'm, I'm very happy and I'm, um, I'm ecstatic that we're, we're moving forward.
Uh, Drew.
Um, yeah, I mean, I, like, I think we had, we're, we're conflating a couple of issues. So we had a version of this project that, the delays with the environmental concerns, we were gonna, we'd be building right now. It'd be under construction. We had the delays. Um, and now we're, we're back and we have what's maybe a better version of the project, maybe not. Um. That's, uh, that's to be decided, but I think, you know, like others have said. Um. This is a project that of some version of this, of this scope and the scale is what I think we wanted for downtown. What we were hoping for, for the downtown, for the direction we wanted to go. Um, and I've been very impressed with Dave and what he's done and his stick-to-it-iveness. Uh, with coming back with iteration after iteration for us. Um, and right now I think our decision to DTIF and RETIF is absolutely the right thing to do.
Elliot. Yeah, I, you know, I, I definitely would like to think on this, you know, at least for, you know, until the next, uh, open meeting. Um, I'd love to get this, uh, deck in front of us, um, because I, I didn't see this published with the agenda so that the public can get a hold as well. Uh. The general retail is awesome. Um, you know, that was where I was still supportive of the project when we had the additional retail. Um, you know, seeing even the office space makes it actually even more interesting to me. Um, I am a bit concerned about losing the additional parking space. Um, but I mean, that's, that's a trade-off that, you know, the, again, trying to think of, of one way or the other, what would I rather see? Um, you know, and I definitely wanted to see the retail back in there and, and I'm intrigued by the office space along. Um, you know, what would be River Street there? Um, you know, what I, what I'm really concerned about though is, is again. Um, we're, we're kind of living in some very murky waters and uncharted territory this, this time of that, that this COVID nineteen thing. Um, you know, and I absolutely agree, uh, I forget who said it. I think maybe it was you Marty, the, you know. I don't think we've realized yet the full floor, um, of, of what has been this shock to our economy. Um, I'm very concerned about, you know, the bank being able to, to continue to finance. Um, you know, any type of, of these jumbo packages here. Um, you know, and, and so I'm especially hearing that, you know, uh, and I get, we don't have the construction drawings yet, the architects drawings yet. Um, but especially not knowing what the true cost of this project's gonna be. Um, I'm very wary to move forward, um, you know, with, with this effort, you know, to, to once again start this all back up again. I, I feel like, you know, if we haven't recognized deja vu, we're doomed to repeat it. Um, so I'm, I'm just being very wary here and cautious, I guess, and, and I do want to definitely look at this closer and, and think about it.
Even if we don't, uh, have this project. The city of Batavia is in a better position to have twenty-three years to have a project. Than it is having twenty years or nineteen years or seventeen years. And that type of project to build, just something to keep in mind.
Uh, Jenny.
Hi, um. You know, I, I really like what has been brought to the table, um. Regarding the retail, the addition of the retail and even the addition of the office space. Um, the losing of the thirty-two parking spots, um, really doesn't concern me that much. Um, but I do, knowing with the state of the economy right now and, and what. That could potentially hold for us on this project. Um. You know, I, I would be in support of DTIFing, RETIF, TIF-ing, um, this area. Um, and seeing maybe where it goes with this project. Um, again, you know, it brings back the retail and the office, you know, I get more concerned on whether or not the residential can get filled. Um, especially at this time, um, none of us have that. You know, we don't know what's gonna happen when things start to open up. Um, we can only hope that the good things and, and why I'm not scared about the retail is we have the eight. Um, boardwalk spaces across and that's kind of an incubator for those. People to test out their businesses and if Batavia has an appetite for that and, you know, we can see that to fill in hopefully in those retail spaces. So. Um, but I, I can completely understand where people want to chew on this a little bit more, digest it. Um, and I'd definitely be in agreement, not making a decision tonight on that.
Uh, Joe.
Thank you. Uh, I'm, I'm gonna be in the same boat, chew on it some more, gnaw on this bone until we get all the marrow picked off of it. Um, but that won't take me long because I'm a fast eater. Um, Chris, there was a comment you made earlier and it spurred a question in my mind. You had said that with this project, we've already run into two of the bigger stumbling blocks that you could have. And you didn't foresee that that was gonna happen anymore with any kind of delays and, and that brings to mind the question. What if there is something, let's say we find ancient burial site and it has to be postponed and archaeologists come in. And some of these, something else weird, stupid, unforeseen that hits, that delays this. Can you then untiff and RETIF again? How many times in an area, i- is there an opportunity that if we ran into a delay, could we go through this process a second time?
I would answer that by saying, to me, it's a bigger mystery what the state legislature might do with TIF. Than it is with finding, you know, some. Some Indian burial ground.
That's, that's, pick a calamity that delays it for eighteen to twenty-four months. Pick one.
I mean, we, you know, we're, we're not in a tornado belt, but tornadoes do happen. Uh, you know, I suppose you could get another, you know, pandemic. It's just, it's, you never, you know, Joey, you can't say, but you try to make your best estimates based on the information you have. The information you have tells me that we learned an awful lot about this site. And I think the chances of having another hiccup. Are significantly diminished than they were twenty-four months ago. Um, again, I think the bigger issue is if we don't do anything or if we base our decision on. Let's wait to find out more information, we're maybe in a place where. The many taxing districts out there that aren't real, you know, fans of TIF. Will work hard to lobby their legislators and say, you know, enough with TIF. And right now, we're still living under the current conditions where a TIF district is twenty-three years with a potential extension of twelve. You know, and quite frankly, every year that that stays the same, I'm usually surprised. Because every year it seems like someone's got a reason to change that law. So, um, I, I'm, let's put it this way, I'm gonna say I'm eighty-plus percent confident. That what we have now is what we're gonna find. And, uh, who knows what the price of, you know, lumber may be or steel or, you know, what, uh, the, the cost of labor might be in the future. I mean, there's a lot of things we don't control. Uh, but going with the information we have, I feel more confident about this project. Breaking ground provided that Shodin gets his financing now than I did last year.
Okay, so going back to my question, is there a limit on the number of times an area can be DTIFed and RETIF?
I don't know of any, no. I think all you gotta do is you gotta still prove up eligibility.
Still go back through the process we're looking to do right now. That's something that in case, and that's, so I'm looking at is, is there, if we had to, is there a one and done kind of thing with that? Okay, thank you. And then Laura, you had made a comment just a minute ago. It may not be this project, but it'd be nicer to have twenty-three year TIF than an eighteen year TIF.
Yes.
If we, if we do RETIF this, does that give us the opportunity to go out with an RFP to see if somebody else has another idea for this property? Or for this area, knowing that they'd have a full twenty-three year TIF behind them.
Well, sure. I mean, you've got this, you've got this project on, uh, the, the table right now. Um, but you just have to look at, uh, what the, what the consequences might be. Under the terms of the current redevelopment agreement.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, let me see, we got, uh, Keenan next.
Hey, guys. So I had a question, not question, um, losing the parking spaces, I don't, doesn't really concern me. My notes here, I had, um, if we were to, uh, re-DTF and RETIF. Are we able to recoup city costs? And if not all of the costs, how much are we able to recoup? And then, um. Also, we don't know, again, with what's going on with the, the pandemic issues, what's gonna be the loss to the city? And how much is it going to cost the city over the long run? I, I love this project. I would like to see it go forth. Um, but there's a lot of things we can't just leave the city, um, out in the open. With, with the huge loss. So, um, I would also like to look at more of the data. I know we talked about having what staff, I believe, look at. If we're able to recoup these costs, if we DTIF and RETIF. Um, I just don't want to leave us holding a bag of, um, bills at the end of this thing.
Sure. So, um, DTIF-ing, RETIF-ing gives you the greatest possibility of being able to recoup the costs. The only question, whether, um, we would be able to recoup costs that we paid when it was TIF number five. If it's TIF number five and, and we just leave it TIF number five. Um, TIF Act would definitely allow us to pay ourselves back. But we'd only be able to pay ourselves back if there was increment left after providing whatever incentive was necessary to meet a but-for. Um, you know, uh, gap that existed in a project that was brought to us. So that's why I think having twenty-three years and this project, which we can see what the ultimate increments is. Um, from seven hundred thousand dollars initially to over a million dollars at the end of the twenty-three years. Uh, versus unknown project B that will have maybe seventeen years of increment for. So that's why I think doing the DTIF, RETIF, even if we're only able to recoup the, let's say, us. Four hundred thousand dollars for the environmental remediation. I still think that four hundred thousand dollars is gonna be more than what the city would have been able to recoup on all of those other expenses. In the reduced time period.
Thank you.
Sure.
Um. Mark, did you speak already on this?
I have not.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, so yeah, as we had the advantage of having a lot more people talk before me, um, so I've been able to think about this. And I was thinking about it initially, I wasn't on council for the initial vote, but then it came back without the retail. And that's when I said no. I would have been a yes if I was on council for the original vote. So I've been thinking about this. My vote would have been yes. If nothing had changed years ago, then it would have been a yes vote. Um, so I'm gonna stick to the, the principles I have there, that if I just look at it from a black and white aspect there. Um, that I would be happy going forward with this. Um, I'm thinking about the fact that yes, could we possibly have, you know, send us out. For another development agreement, um, and we would just wait to RETIF obviously if we did that. So that is still a possibility if people wanted to go that way. Um. But the other, um, thing that actually kind of surprised me a little bit tonight was that we had talked. Um, to Dave about the possibility of a smaller project and I wasn't sure if that was something that was just gonna be brought forth. Um, that yes, we would have less parking and everything, but you'd need less parking if you had a smaller project. Um, but if we get right down to it and we just, we want to move forward, I'm, I'm okay saying that I would, I would support this. Because it has the retail back. It, it gets back to what I expected to be halfway built by now. So I'm okay with this.
Thanks. Um, I think, let's see, Mike Risato.
Yes. Um, I think at this point to try to rework something to work in TIF five, I, I don't think we're gonna get anything to work in TIF five. Uh, at this point with the timeframe we have left. Uh, I'm also not concerned about the parking spots. I think the new retail is great. What, I, I'm not worried about it running out either because I think this brings a new form of retail. To our downtown, something we don't currently have. We have a lot of small buildings right now. It's. We have a lot of small buildings right now, it's limited space, so this would be an opportunity to build on that. The residential, if, I think if Shodin was worried about that, I don't, I don't think we should worry about it so much as city council. I think if the builder was uncomfortable with that much retail or, uh, that much residential, they wouldn't go forward with the project. Uh, projections right now with the Federal Housing Administration, Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac, rental's gonna be huge after post-COVID nineteen. Uh, so I think this is probably a time to entertain a project like this. Going forward and tiffing and re-tiffing, I have no problem going forward with that, we have lots of opportunities. I think this development has been well advertised, it's been in the news. I think if there was somebody out there that was interested, they would have made their way to us already. The opportunity's been there, so I think we should definitely go forward on this re-tiffing and dissolving the TIF and re-tiffing.
And Nick spoke, and Tony.
Yeah, uh, okay, um, yeah, this originally started towards on council, but, uh, after I came on council, there was, uh, several things that happened that gave me heartburn to vote against. First was the two million dollars additional, um, and then it was loss of retail, and then it was going to thirty-five years. Um, but now, what, what we're seeing here tonight, uh, the majority of those things are corrected, that retail's back. Uh, we're, we're talking back to twenty-three years and not thirty-five. Um, so my, you know, my heartburn for that is, is kind of, wait, the, uh, parking, um. Yeah, I, I get, uh, losing some parking, but I, it's, parking is not the only benefit that I see with this project. You know, just by getting a parking lot isn't the, the, you know, that, sure, that's an important piece, but bringing people to our downtown. I think is, you know, the, the benefits of that are immense. To me, that's the, the greatest thing, and that's the greatest shot we can give our, our downtown businesses to, to just bring more people down there. Um, in terms of, uh, you know, the economy, where it's gonna be, you know, no one knows that. But, but I can tell you, it's projects like this that help us get to a better economy because it creates tons of jobs. Um, that, that, uh, you know, construction jobs put in place and, 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 and many other jobs. Um, I like the addition of the office space, um, I like the, I like the looks of the, that, that retail. Um, it's gonna look fantastic right across in those beautiful eight little boardwalk shops, uh, that are going up. And we're making some huge progress, even had Citizen Brown out there, he and I got rained out tonight. Um, so, uh, you know, I'm, I'm in support of this, uh, I understand that, that there's a desire to chew on this more. I would say, you know, my understanding is that, you know, staff is coming for direction here. It doesn't mean that, you know, tonight we're making a final decision, I think we can still, you know, those that, that need more time to, to chew on it. Uh, but I, you know, I would like to direct staff to, yeah, let's, let's fully explore this, if we can make this happen, to detiff and re-tiff, get that twenty-three years back. Um, to, to make the project happen and, you know, moving forward with the, the hope that, uh, we're planning big so that, you know, uh, we, we have a revitalized downtown and we all benefit from it, so I would, I would support it.
Okay, and it, thank you, Tony, for that, because that kind of echoes my, what I'm thinking, because that was the original discussion for tonight. Is the discussion regarding, uh, exploring the options of detiffing five and re-tiffing six. And that's why all of the information regarding this project actually have to take a, it has to operate on the back burner. For it, because that's, there's so many other things that affect that. But we have to operate from the city's point of view, how are we protected? Because the thing that kind of concerns me is this is another time that we're changing something to keep this project alive. But we have to figure out what our options are before that and weigh those pros and cons and the consequences of that. Because some of the things that I do not know from a legal position are timing. When you detiff five, there's no guarantee, even if we say, there's, you're putting the finger on the scale. You still have to statutorily meet the requirements. So I wanna make sure we don't detiff five, and then statutorily, we don't have something that is able to be held up in court that, that is able to, that we don't have any TIFs anymore. Because we detiffed five and TIF six didn't make it, no matter how much we want it, it still has to pass that statutory requirement. Um, the other things are, where does the redevelopment agreement under TIF five? Do we have to enter into a new redevelopment agreement for TIF six? And I, these are just questions that would be part of the exploration of what are the true pros and cons of not project-based tiffing and re-tiffing, but should we do this at all? If we don't do it at all, it doesn't matter if whether or not you're doing it for the project. If there's too many harms to the city to detiff right now, then that should be the consideration. Then, if it passes and it doesn't harm the city and we re-tiff, then you go to the project. And it, then everybody can weigh in on the merits of that, the project alone. Um, but that's just like kind of what Tony said, let's get back to the question of should the exploration of detiffing five and all the, the pros and cons as a result of that and re-tiffing? Do we want to direct staff to do that and then come back to us and find out? Here's the pros and cons of tiffing or detiffing, project separate, do we want to do it? And you can consider the project as a result of it, but I think we need other questions that resolve the mechanics of that need to be answered, because just like you had said, there's some questions we just don't know. And those go to the questions of tiffing and re-tiffing rather than tiffing for this project.
So I think, um, we should be very specific in, uh, what the questions were. And you just mentioned one that I could immediately answer off the top of my head, but now I cannot remember what, which one of the questions it was. But just so that.
Redevelopment agreement, or when one ends, the other one starts.
I think it's the, the redevelopment agreement, we will definitely need to, uh, have a new redevelopment agreement that reflects both the, uh, city's obligation to establish a TIF six. However, uh, the, uh, those two things can be moving in parallel. In other words, what we were looking for tonight was for direction to staff that, yes, move forward with putting together the elements. Because eventually you're going to be voting on a resolution, detiff and re-tiff. So, I think what you're asking for is do the research to make sure that we are going to be able to establish, um, the new TIF. And that's what we're looking for your direction to do, because that's, that's a lot of, uh, heavy lifting. And the, if the interest is, um, so, so, no, it's like, uh, work in order to be able to justify a new TIF six that doesn't put the city in a worse position. Then you would be giving us the direction to pursue the detiff, re-tiff tonight. It's kind of, you're approving, yes, detiff, re-tiff, there are things you will still have to vote on in the future to say, to establish the TIF. Am I correct, Chris?
Well, a couple of things, first of all, you absolutely have to have a new redevelopment agreement because in the preamble of the redevelopment agreement, it cites the TIF ordinance of the vehicle which you'll be creating, the redevelopment project itself. So you'll need a redevelopment agreement, new one, uh, under the TIF six. You know, there's a legal script for the new TIF, and so that's a gimme. Um, you know, we've, this is not totally uncharted waters, first of all, it's happens frequently elsewhere. But we ourselves, you know, created a detiff, re-tiff, when we created TIF number five. We took some properties out of one and three, uh, and, you know, it, it's a matter of literally extracting properties from an existing TIF district. In this case, one and three and five, but particularly five. And then creating a new TIF that includes these properties. So there, it's, I'm not saying it's not complicated, but I, I'm also saying it's, it's not unprecedented. And it, it does, there's a way of doing it, there's a tension to detail, but there's a legal way of doing it where you, uh, create this new TIF, including properties that are in existing TIFs, as long as you extract them. They can't be in two TIFs at the same time, um, but it, it's, it's not that difficult. I think the point is, is that you can't establish a TIF without a, without an eligibility study. Bottom line, you can't do it, you have to make a findings that the area meets the standards of a conservation area TIF. You can't make those findings if you don't have the study. So by releasing the hounds to, in this case, staff and myself included, to start to read the, the eligibility study of, is, is no harm, no foul. I mean, I believe I can get the vast majority of it done before my existing contract expires. So, you know, I, I don't expect, uh, us to find that none of it's eligible. And I do expect to find that the majority of what we're proposing as TIF six would be, in the aggregate, eligible. Um, but we may as well, in my opinion, we may as well as staff, start that eligibility study because, you know, if you wanna accelerate the process, you should do things, you know, you can do now. And you're not committing to abolishing TIF five by doing a study of six. You're not even committing to creating six by just doing the study. So, and, you know, we could probably do the study without the city's direction, we just don't wanna waste resources if you have absolutely no inclination in the majority to look at this detiff, re-tiff program. I mean, that would be a waste of resources. If you think it's worth the study, uh, then I think you direct staff to begin the eligibility study.
Is there any exposure for reimbursing developer costs from the city's point of view?
The one thing I like about the existing RDA is.
Let me just, let me just finish so you know exactly where I'm coming from. Um, is, I don't know if this constitutes a written-in off-ramp for either party. So I don't know, you know, obviously, we've been talking tonight that some of our costs may not be recovered from, um, re-tiffing. Would we have to reimburse the developer if we choose this course of action?
Uh, we have to talk about that, when you say, I, I, Chris, because technically speaking, the administration to create a TIF, that's TIF eligible. My time working on this TIF, those are costs of administration that are TIF eligible. To date, we haven't spent any money from a TIF fund on internal staff time, but that is eligible.
I think he was asking for the developer costs, and I think Dave wanted to chime in on that.
If you, uh, Marty, uh, it's Dave, if you detiff and re-tiff, I'm, I don't know of anything in the development agreement right now where you have to pay us something, and I don't know of any reason why I'm gonna be coming asking you, uh, for something. So, then I think the answer to your question is no, and I don't know why I would wanna charge it for.
Yeah, and that's just one of those things, I know, we, we could become liable for certain points for not holding up one end of the part of the bargain or another, and then, you know, and that's just making sure we think of consequences.
Sure. Don't detiff and re-tiff, and we just leave five in place, then Dave is going to come to us with the off-ramp that it is no longer financially feasible because he cannot secure financing with just time left in TIF five. So that's sort of the way things would play out if we did not continue to pursue the detiff and the re-tiff by at least engaging in the eligibility study for that.
And I, one thing, the spigot's often a great deal with the city because the biggest costs that's out there now are to demo excavate and environmental remediation. And the way the existing RDA is written is the, the, the property owner, in this case, Shodin, undertakes that, that work. So we're not gonna spend city money above and beyond we spend now. I mean, there'll be other costs, but nothing as large as the remediation cost. Uh, because we're not, according to the RDA that's in place now, we're not responsible for that. So we'll spend it, but we'll spend TIF money, uh, and not city, you know, reserves or, or general fund for the cleanup. Well, we'll spend debt, but it'll be repaid back with the TIF.
Okay, so to kind of wrap this up, what is the consensus for, uh, exploring the option and finding out what our options are for, uh, detiffing five and re-tiffing six?
Kenan says yes.
Straw poll, uh, Jenny? You wanna just go around the room, just take a straw poll?
Yes.
True. Uh, and the, the straw poll would be to further direct staff to detiff five and re-tiff six.
Hey, can I ask a quick, a quick question, please?
Yes.
Chris, we already have an eligibility study for TIF five. Can we use that for TIF six?
We'll have, no, we'll have to, uh, we can use the information from it, there are not that many parcels in five. Uh, so that's only a limited amount of information. It, bottom line is, the larger the TIF, the, well, I should say, the, the, the more the parcels, the more the number of parcels, the more comprehensive and longer, uh, more time probably it'll take to do the eligibility study, because you gotta study every parcel individually and then look at it as a whole in terms of, is there a preponderance of, of this type of condition throughout the TIF? So, we're expanding TIF five, and there's reasons for that, one of which is it creates additional opportunities for properties that are in an existing TIF, but nothing's happened to them yet. They're still in, if not the same worst condition they were when they were first put into a TIF. And also, we'd like to create as much increment in the new TIF as possible so we can, you know, have additional funding in that TIF to create the redevelopment opportunities in it. So, uh, I guess to answer your question, we, we can use some of the information we got on five. But as was pointed out earlier, a lot of five has changed because the billing inventory is down to about nothing.
So is everyone okay with that? Everybody understand, hi, you would, no, you wouldn't?
I'm okay with that. I, I would like to have the answers, you know, even if it's just in an email as soon as we can about what would be reimbursable if we move on to a new TIF.
Sounds good, I've got it written down.
Okay, Jenny?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, excellent, um, Miller?
Yes.
Risado?
Yes.
Seth?
Yes.
Knop?
Yes.
Chanzit?
Yep.
Baron?
Yes.
Will?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes, please.
Callahan? Callahan? Meitzler?
Yes.
Malay?
Hi.
Uwer?
Yes.
Serone?
Yes.
And McFadden?
Yes.
Fourteen to zero.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I think it's more getting, just like Alan said, some of those, kind of the legal questions that are kind of pressing from the pros and cons point of view.
Sounds good.
Okay, another item agenda down. Um, next up is, uh, the number seven, the discussion on twenty-twenty budget austerity measures to address. expected revenue shortfalls caused by the COVID-19 pandemic. Laura?
Okay, I am trying to start sharing my screen, but for some reason, merely the button is not making it happen.
Laura, this is Dave. Did Howard release my screen?
I am working on it now. There's a lot of people on, so it's
Thanks, Howard.
Give me just a moment.
Technology works slower after nine o'clock.
It does.
I apologize.
So do I.
Hello. Should I go down and make myself the presenter, Howard?
There you go.
Okay.
Should be now.
I should, yeah, I think the button changed, so. Oh, no, it didn't. I'll try to make myself the presenter.
That's what I thought we just did.
Now I can do it. Just close that and do this. Shut my screen. Is everybody looking at the the chart or no?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So this question about COVID-19 budget reduction recommendations. And over the course of the last couple of weeks, I've had meetings with the department heads and asked them to suggest any expenses which they felt that could be deferred at least for now until we get a clearer picture of how the COVID-19 crisis is going to affect our city finances. And so I am not sure if this is large enough so that people can see, or if you want me to zoom in a little bit more, let me know. The reason for these reductions are necessary. I mean, it goes without saying that we know that there's going to be probably a fairly significant reduction in some of our revenues on which our operational expenses are based, as well as a delay in receipt of those. And for that reason, it becomes necessary for us to have a very strict focus on preserving our cash and in light of the fact that none of what's going on right now any less of a burden on the staff of the city to be able to provide the services that this city needs in a crisis like this. We've had estimates from the state that they believe individual income taxes are estimated to decline by 6.9% in fiscal year 2020 and 8.8% fiscal year 2021. They estimate corporate income taxes are decreased by 12% in their fiscal year 2020 and 17.8% in fiscal year 2021. And sales taxes are estimated to decrease by 8.4% in fiscal year 2020 and 17.5% in fiscal year 2021. They have also given a 60-day delay for certain retail taxpayers to pay those amounts to the state. So we likewise expect a delay in the receipt of those payments from the state. The state has also delayed the filing for income tax in in parallel with the the federal returns being delayed as well. I just want to note those numbers that I gave. The state budget year ends on June 30th. So those numbers don't exactly coincide with directly with our fiscal year, which is a calendar year. Because of these shortfalls, we expect a potential $200,000 shortfall in the $2.5 million that we ordinarily receive from the local government distributed fund. If you look at the state sales tax, an 8.4% decrease would be a reduction of $424,000, a 17% reduction would reduce that by $867,000. And then also, the local taxes that we ordinarily collect, we expect those to decline as well, such as the home roll sales tax and local use tax ordinarily bring in 3.6 million and liquor tax brings in an additional $370,000. It's very hard for us to estimate what the reduction in in those numbers will look like based upon the fact that there are certain of the retailers who have seen an increase in their business by virtue of the the pandemic, but certainly the lion's share of the businesses that ordinarily provide us with that home roll sales tax are experiencing a significant decline. So we know that the effect on our finances is going to be substantial. But what we don't know is how much. So in light of that uncertainty, we've identified costs that we think we can put off. And I can't emphasize enough that this isn't fat trimming off of our city budget. Our our city budget, I feel very strongly, has no fat. We try to use as few resources as possible to provide the service level that the residents of Batavia expect us to. So what we identified here are things that we can at least put off until we have a clearer picture of what things will look like. All reported in the spreadsheet that I have here, total $5.2 million. There there may be items that you see on here that you say, boy, you know, those are things we would really like to do this year. And I'd like to point out that the recommendation here is to take a measured approach. I think maybe we should start with a hold on these expenses for the next 60 days. And through that 60 days, but certainly at the 60-day point, then we can make a course correction for what the actual circumstances have been during that period of time. We can perhaps, at that point, we feel more comfortable moving forward with certain expenditures that are listed here. It could also be in the other direction where we, at that point, know that we might make it through this year, but 2021 is going to look vastly different. And if the 60 days after that will put us right in the midst of our 2021 budget building process, we're very fortunate to have a healthy reserve account in our general fund. And if people refer that to that as a, sometimes a rainy day fund, well, it's it certainly is raining now. And we do feel very fortunate to have those reserves available. But I do want to point out that as the, as Peggy's financial projections show over the next five years, simply by virtue of the expected increase in pension contributions and salaries and personnel are 75% of the general fund budget that we were looking at significantly depleting that over the course of the next five years. But whereas, you know, our policy is for 60 days in our general fund, and we have 154, I'm sorry, 145. This this really gives us some amount of security that other towns do not enjoy at this time. So we do feel very, very fortunate. I think that what's on this list, I just want you to know that the department heads were very careful and prudent about what was put on this list. For instance, a, if you have equipment on this list that was in the budget to be replaced, and the department heads are making a recommendation not to replace that, it is not without risk, you know, it it is possible because it has been identified as end of life that it could sustain a failure that would be expensive and inconvenient to repair. However, I trust their judgment as to whether the purchase, the replacement can be put off into perhaps next year. So I I also want to point out that, you know, this is a constantly changing situation. An example was during the time I was writing this memo, the governor came out with extending the at-home, the stay-at-home order, an additional 30 days. So it could be that I am coming to you in the intervening period of time and making adjustments to this plan, but we just really felt that it would be most responsible to put these expenses on hold at this time. So we're recommending that the city council direct that these budget reductions be implemented immediately and the matter be revisited in 60 days.
Because I'll start off, I'll say, you know, from my standpoint, I'm really thankful that you got department heads to go through things so quickly and to put together basically a deferral list of things they can, you know, get by with until we can figure out what we really can afford to do and where we're going to be going in the next six months or year.
Alan?
Go ahead, Marty.
Yeah, I was looking at some of this. Some of these, I don't know if, while I understand, it kind of counts towards the picture of the 5 million. Some of the smaller things that, such as the gateway 50% reduction, that's not like that could be used anywhere else, right? That was all from the grant.
Actually, those funds aren't restricted in any way, and so they they could be allocated for another purpose.
But still related to economic development, though.
No, actually, the state of Illinois released those for us to use in any way we saw fit, even for operational expenses. It has just been the 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 will of the city to, since it was originally allocated for economic development, to hold those until a project came along.
Okay. Some of the other things were related to the city hall, they were coming out of reserves already, right? And we could were those, or were they not? That was that was just being funded out of reserves anyways.
Some of it was part of what had already been in previous years transferred from the general fund into the capital improvement plan. However, this year, we did move more than that from the general fund over into that capital improvement project in order for it to be done this year.
Okay, thank you. I guess the the other question is the the scarier one, the more unnerving one is when do you think we would, obviously not in the next 60 days, but when do we think we'll have a better picture on revenue projections for when those may be significantly off that we have the other, the larger 800-pound gorilla is staff and salaries that we would have to start considering? I mean, I know some people on here have been through those horrible discussions before. But I think we would want to know kind of when to expect maybe learning of it. And we are in a better position than a lot of other communities. But with the true unknowns, we don't know by how much we're better off.
So I think it's very dependent upon what the reopening plan is for our state and whether they intend to do it the state all at once, which certainly would take longer. Or if they do it regionally, would that work in our favor or perhaps to our detriment because we're part of the Chicago-Maxpolitan area? Until the reopening plan is known, I think that that's the, we'll have the biggest moment of clarity as to to what extent will our revenues be affected. But I think that the timing will be good on this because I get the sense that by the time we are building our 2021 budget, things will be better known.
Okay, thank you.
And I expect that we'll have those hard discussions.
Right. I think the only thing that I had a kind of a hesitation on, it's a small one, but it's the 10,000 for the ammunition reduction. Those are safety issue kind of things. I'm very hesitant, and you just got to make sure is this because they're not doing as many qualifications and practice? I I don't want people thinking that we're sending them out with just minimum ammunition and then getting trapped in a situation.
No, and what this has to do with, I think that the chief, it it has to do with the the training and and the, you know, going to the range type of, it has nothing to do with the supply of ammunition available to perform their jobs. And there is no way that the chief would have put anything on here that would jeopardize the ability of the police department to deliver on every expectation that the community has for safety.
Correct. And that was the discussion that I had had on this with someone else about it was exactly that, that I felt it was probably due to qualifications and practices than actual. But I want to make sure because that is a, that's safety concerns.
Sure.
Alan?
Go ahead.
I have, I have one comment to make about the bike share program, which I know may seem like bluff. It's my understanding that that we're the only community of the proposed, the communities that had signed on to the original agreement, we're the only ones to not sign the contract so far. And that if we do pull out now, then we will lose the incentive of those those first year, those first-year cities where I believe it was at 25% that the county was kicking in towards the purchase of those bicycles. And so if we do fall off of that network, if we do fall off of that map, you know, as as things do reopen, and we are seeing such an increase in the number of pedestrians and cyclists that have more free time and and are enjoying the outdoors to really capitalize on that when when our downtown is reopening and and more people are are out and about. I think it would be a great benefit to our downtown businesses to have the extra, the extra bike traffic and to be on that map and hopefully attract the people from up and down the river utilizing that bike share program.
So yes, and from a conversation that I had with Ryan Peterson at King County Division of Transportation, he mentioned that Shodin has actually become part of this program and at three different of their largest communities in the area, including Mill Creek, what they're building up in St. Charles, and there's a third one, and I can't recall what it is. But they've signed on to the bike share program in a big way to have stations in those communities that then people can rent and ride east, west, or into the bike path. So it's not just a bike path program anymore. And what I would say to that is, you know, we could decide not to include this now. We could see what things look like in 60 days in the middle of summer. What's nice is that whereas in the, back in February, Ryan had said there was a six-week lead time What's nice is that whereas in back in February, Ryan had said there was a six week lead time on ordering the bikes. Now Colony has purchased all of the bikes and so you can literally get them right away whenever you decide that you want to begin the program. But Abby's point about not, if we don't implement the program in twenty twenty, we will lose access to a thirty thousand dollar that Kane County has, that they will apportion on a per bike basis throughout the system.
Hey, Alan, this is Mark.
Go ahead, Mark.
Laura, I I'd like to understand some of these numbers a little bit better because I think there's some stuff in here that we've already saved. If you look at canceled events and things like that for OT for the police. We just had the discussion last week or two weeks ago or whatever about the brick pavers between Wilson and Houston. We know that's going to be less. I know that there was a one of the projects recently, the the quotes came in something like three hundred thousand dollars below engineers estimate. So they already came in below budget. So what we don't see here is what we've actually saved already to see where we're where we're really at. And this is actually something we've asked about for a long time is something along the line that, hey, by the way, here's the the things we've done in the first three months of the year, whether you break it up by quarters and say, here's where we're actually at based on what we budgeted and what all the estimates are coming back in at or what all the quotes are actually coming back in at. So we never really have a good idea of of some of those expenditures as it is. I look at things like the Economic Development Manager, and yes, we should not be hiring anybody. It's to go, especially if you're going to go hire somebody, you would. And then if sixty days down the line, we're saying, hey, yeah, you know what, everybody's got to take a pay cut because this is really, really bad. How does how does that look to everybody? Well, you just hired somebody and now you're going to cut my pay. The one thing that I'd probably, that I'm also kind of wondering about because it's stuff that we've saved money for in accounts for a long time, it's stuff like buying the new Seagrave engine. That's not just like a surprise seven hundred thousand dollar cost to us. That's stuff that we budget every year chunk by chunk by chunk, correct? So that's already in a fund that, again, and there's a safety issue there. I am much more concerned about police and fire than I am, sorry if Gary's on the line, than I am about some of the the public utility vehicles that aren't like safety issues.
Well, we do have most of the department heads on the call today, so I would say is ask Randy about the Seagrave engine.
Yeah, just hold on one second, Randy, and then we'll come back to you. And I'm wondering too what type of impact we're seeing right now on late payments on electric and water? Because I would expect that though, for the most part, water is probably at the same levels, that'd be my expectation, but staff can can play in there because people who would normally travel outside homes to go use bathrooms in different towns or within town are just using their bathroom at home. And so some of those things probably haven't changed much, so I would expect those revenues to stay fairly flat, except for the fact that some people may not have been able to pay, and I just don't know where we're at with not getting those types of payments. Everything else is relying on taxes, but those are self-funded utilities, so to lump those in with, we might not get tax revenue, doesn't seem like an apples to apples comparison. So I guess, like I said, going back to it, I'd like to understand more about what we actually have saved and then turn it over to Randy, and then for water and electric, what are your thoughts on the on the on the engine there?
Okay, so Gary, maybe if I could have you chime in, the three hundred thousand dollars in savings was for the phase one engineering for Prairie Street, I believe.
So ultimately, I mean Prairie Street, that was that's for, actually, it's for tonight, on tonight's agenda, is it not, for the phase two design? You kind of threw me there for a second. There's our local share on Prairie Street that ultimately we're going to end up paying. So so and and I know sometimes we look at engineers' estimates and projects come in below bid. I don't know that I'd put those in the savings column as much as it's slower than anticipated. But that's not the final quote on quote as well. I I think you can put it in the savings column when you get to the as well stage. I don't know that I'd be counting on savings in the in the we receive bid stage.
And and then we have counted some savings in this plan. You'll note that the road salt program for twenty twenty, we used so much less road salts that that reflects the savings of a hundred thousand dollars. And then also the dual usage and cost is a savings of forty five thousand.
To mix those two in the same document makes it very difficult because some are things that we have saved and then we have additional cuts that we are trying to make. So where are we at? How far have we gotten to five point two million based on what we have saved?
All right, if I can clarify with the road salt. We traditionally purchase road salts in the fall and again the following winter. But we have funds budgeted for twenty twenty fall road salt purchase. But because last winter was fairly mild and because last winter's contract price was also very competitive, we actually purchased enough salt last winter to fill up the dome. So we we don't, we're the hundred thousand is is a savings that we won't be spending in the fall because we don't need to purchase salt in the fall to fill up the salt dome before the start of of winter. So that's that is a projected savings. That's not that's not a in the past savings. And then if I can just get to things like the city hall, I mean, if if we if council desires to use the the argument that those things we've kind of saved up for, we should just go forward with, then I'll point right to the city hall. I mean, city hall is something we've been saving for for years. And, you know, staff identified it as a as a cut and and and, I'm sorry, I'll get to the last point, the water and sewer. Because we we train new things from an organization wide standpoint. And, you know, that's the philosophy that's always been followed. And if council wants to go into a different philosophy, that's fine. But from from top to bottom and left to right, we've kind of always tried to treat our organization equitably, fairly, maybe not necessarily always equitably, but as fairly as we can. And we look at all areas of 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 the city to to cut costs. We don't, we have traditionally not told, you know, this department or that department, don't worry about cutting costs, but then the other department, you got to cut a lot of costs. We traditionally have not done that in the past.
And Randy was going to discuss the Seagrave engine? Is Randy still?
Yeah, I'm here.
Oh, good. Yeah.
Okay, the the engine, the money for the engine is already saved and it's already in an account. I feel comfortable that the engine, the engine that we're replacing, it's twenty three years old, which is very old. But I I don't think it's going to be a problem making it last for another year or at least long enough to, you know, maybe use that money to to patch some holes in our budget until we can get back on our feet again.
And Randy, am I, do I remember correctly that you said that it takes about six months to build one of these engines? And so it's kind of like a six month delay in the purchase because even if you ordered it in January, you wouldn't really receive it until mid-year?
Actually, it'll probably be about a nine month process.
Nine month process.
And when do you pay?
Usually pay like about twenty five percent upfront, fifty percent, the other next fifty percent like about when it's about ninety percent completed and then the rest of it when it is complete.
Okay. So and I guess that goes back, and I meant to say this before. Laura, you said this is not things that we're necessarily saying we're not going to do, we're just going to push them off. But we get to the point where you're you're pushing them off, but you're everything that we have in the next five to ten year plan is going to get pushed. Because you can't just all of a sudden not spend five million dollars this year, be five million dollars under revenue projections and spend five million dollars extra next year to make up for it. We're not going to be in that place likely for another twelve months that will have normal revenue streams.
That's correct. So we I fully expect that as part of our twenty twenty one budget that we may have to rebalance the our plans, which is very similar to the process that we undertook in response to two thousand eight was to take a look at those capital budgets and we moved them out, you know. We have built, rebuilt up the fund to be able to do that work in Ward One and Area Three. It's kind of reflective of the choices that were back then in order to balance the budget. Was not to make the three hundred thousand dollar or six hundred thousand dollar per year contribution to those funds. But luckily, in the last few years, we were able to restore that funding. But those are questions that we'll have as we move forward is we are going to put forth a balanced budget that addresses the needs and expected service levels of this community.
Yeah, and that's just where I get nervous, though, is is when we're talking about delaying, you know, buying a fire engine for a year. Well, no, that may be more than a year. So we have something that we we've been funding at an incremental amount in a different account that that's one of those things, again, a light safety issue, and you may be able to make it last another year, but can we make it last another two or three years? Because we really have to push things like that farther out because there's such a massive expense and they make it year, so to speak, to save a bunch of money really quickly.
Right. So what we're talking about tonight is not delaying these expenses for two years. We're only talking about delaying them really for sixty days.
But, okay.
Yeah, Alderman Wolf.
Mike, go ahead.
Laura, as far as sales tax revenue, what is the delay on knowing what the actual numbers will be for March and April?
Not knowing at this point specifically the extent to which businesses are, you can't just look at what they made last year, even if they're open. There's significant, but how much are they? I have no idea how much in in sales our restaurants are doing, being able to carry out and delivery. I know, you know, what big retailers are closed right now, so that. But the the other thing is is into the future, might be a huge impact by which businesses never open again because they've been closed for the stay at home.
And I realize that, but when would we know that what the sales were in our town for March and April? Will it be June, July, August, September?
Peggy, can you speak to the turnaround time there? And I know the governor has put a sixty day delay on the payment.
I totally understand that. And I know the governor has given us his numbers for Illinois, but the state is nothing like Illinois.
Oh, exactly.
They've lost jobs, they've had, you know, people moving out. We're increasing our population.
That's right.
Moving here, so I, if he's projecting seventeen percent decline for next year, I can't imagine that we're going to be anywhere close to the state of Illinois projections.
I feel.
To answer that. I was just going to answer the question on the delay. Normally, there is a three month delay. We get December sales in March, in early March. So there's three months, but then there's the optional sixty day delayed payment. So it could be five months before we know.
Right.
And that would only be, you know, it's going to take six to nine months really to see the full impact. Because I'm sure that some are going to pay late.
Right. But we will also get internet sales revenue. And with the census, I would assume that our population is going to grow, we're going to get some cut. We're going to get more federal funding next year than we did this year, right? I would have to assume.
As soon as the census is certified, it usually doesn't happen right at the first of the year. I think it took until April on the last decennial census before it was certified.
Well, I'm I'm for delaying this for sixty days, Laura, and then take and take another look at it in sixty days and see where we stand. But I'm in agreement with with some of the other aldermen that we have saved for some of this stuff. And I I don't want to get discouraged with what the state of Illinois's projections are.
I'm just going to add one thing on the the savings. So if we delay capital purchases that we're funding incrementally based on a schedule and we delay something, that means we can reduce the amount that we incrementally fund for capital in a future year because we've delayed purchases. It's not a huge impact, but it spreads out that cost over another year. But we do have the the money should we need to make those purchases.
Okay. Anybody else? So are we in agreement to proceed with what we have here in the strategic budget reductions to revisit this in sixty days?
Yes.
Yeah. Problem with waiting sixty days on that? Okay, I think we have consensus.
Before we move on to another item, I I don't know if you feel like this is related to the discussion here or if you'd like to have it as a separate discussion. We've had requests from our community and we've seen other communities coming up with small business relief programs. Based on some of the things which are actual savings in this year's budget is something that you might want to consider utilizing the, say, the hundred and fifty thousand dollar gateway grants money that had been allocated for that program over several years, actually. Try to identify some type of funding and put together a proposal for that type of program. I just wanted to know from the alderman if that's something that you want us to consider now in light of the governor just extending the stay at home order for thirty days? Or if you wanted to wait and have it be more of a, you know, get your business started again when if once the stay at home order ends? Or, you know, I I would definitely want to be one percent sure that our our primary motivation here has to be deliver deliver on our core services to our community. But just because it's been brought up, I just wanted to know what the appetite was for something like that. Should we put it in a future agenda for consideration?
Laura, I think I'll win on that. Did you sit on the call this afternoon about from Strong Towns? Did you happen to listen?
Definitely, I could not. I'm sorry.
So that was exactly brought up and they were discussing that specifically because the, for anybody that didn't take part, it was a how communities are surviving, what do we do surviving COVID and coming out of it? And that was specifically one of the things that they talked about. Because you then, the tricky part is who do you pick? You're picking winners and losers and you don't know without looking into the businesses finances, finances as to will that really help them or is it just some money? So the, the kind of theme was be very careful when you're doing it and how you do it. So it needs to be very well thought out.
Yeah, that's something I'd want to give more thought to. You know, some of the things I've read about are, you know, uh, sales tax rebates or property tax rebates and how you, how you were able to structure those. To me makes it somewhat confusing of how it would benefit the different businesses, what, based upon need. I don't know how you would ever figure that out.
Yeah, can I, can I jump in here for a minute? Cause I've been in on a lot of calls with all the, a lot of the area mayors over the last few days on this very varied subject. And I guess the one thing, the message I've heard is there's been some lessons learned in some other towns where they have made an effort to offer up some money and then they subsequently find out that they gave it to somebody who claimed to be a business person in town and found out that that person really wasn't a business person in town. That maybe he was just hiring two or three of your residents to be his employees, but he was off 20 miles away someplace. So the word I, I'm getting is, is that you got to be very, very careful about this idea of giving away grants and money. You'll have, and minutes you put it out, I, I guess those who have tried it have gotten more applications and they really had staff to review them. And you have to go through it with a fine tooth comb and determine that yes, these are really people from your town. They do have a problem, they do need some support. And then I guess like you try to go ahead and do it. Several cities have told me that the way they, if they're going to give any kind of support to the community, the one thing they've recommended is that maybe you take a percentage of everybody's water bill and you reduce their water bill by 20% for a month or two. And you use this money that you were going to give the, the businesses to everybody in the community who's paying a water bill. That way nobody can say, well, I got some and I, and I neighbor didn't. I mean, everybody's paying the bills, so they're all going to get the same, you know, obviously it's going to depend on how much water they're using, how much they're going to get back. But that would be another way to distribute the money. And that way you'd eliminate all this competition and well, he, I'm better than he or all this other stuff that of these other towns have heard. This is a really testy situation to put your toe in the water on.
Anybody else want to weigh in?
Hi, it's Jennifer. I was on the same call as Marty was on this afternoon and, um, just kind of echoing what Marty said that you really have to be careful, um, you know, when you, if you're to implement this type of program, um, especially with the possibility, if it is going out as a grant, um, not being able to recover those because, you know, you're not really helping them to extend it. You're, or you're just helping them to extend it for a couple more weeks as opposed to, you know, it wasn't a good business plan. So I would be very cautious of even thinking of going down this type of path when we're looking at, you know, holding off on delaying some of our bills, um, even by 60 days, if not longer.
Okay. Anybody else? I think that's one we wait on, Laura.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, just a few more to go through here. Move on, then I think up next will be item number 12, Resolution 20-68-R, authorizing execution of preliminary engineering services agreement with Trans System for the Prairie Street and Wilson Street improve, intersection improvements. This is the second part of Prairie Street, the Wilson Street end with the lovely, super expensive railroad crossings. I don't know who wants, is, is Gary here? Is Rahat? Gary, I think your mic's off.
Yes, it sure was. Now you can hear me?
Yep, we can hear you. Nice hearing.
All right. Thank you. I've learned in this meeting that AirPods don't last three hours. I've had to charge them as we, if we have, if we have this meeting. I'm going to go through Rahat's memo, but when I do, I wanted to just right off the bat point out two typos so that the math makes more sense. Uh, near the bottom of page two, there's a reference to water main design cost. That should be 6,611, not 10,611. And then on the chart on the following page, it should be 71,400, not 1,400 under the city's share for design engineering. So if you correct those two typos, the math makes sense. This is the design engineering, so this is phase two engineering for the Wilson and Prairie Street intersection improvements, basically going roughly from Webster North and then doing the intersection. We went through RFQ process, following the federal process for selection of a consultant. Trans Systems submitted a proposal for the cost of design in the amount of $354,611. Uh, the way we budget is that we budget for the total expense and then we show an offsetting revenue. That's why you'll see, and there's a recommendation to award a contract for 354,000. But some of that is the federal share and that will come back to us as an, as a revenue line item, separate from the expense line item. So hopefully that makes sense. The one other thing I wanted to point out, and this will be brought to City Council several times throughout the process, uh, this doesn't, doesn't incorporate improvements of the intersection and including the railroad improvements. We are seeking funding for, uh, some of those railroad improvements and we have, think we have a good shot to get some funding from the ICC. Uh, this will not involve any, uh, need for real estate from the adjoining, uh, commercial properties. That was one key right off the start. The only other thing though is that it will likely, uh, result in the elimination of approximately a half dozen, uh, parallel parking spaces on the north side of Prairie Street, just west of, I'm sorry, the north side of Wilson Street, just west of Prairie, to accommodate the, the turn lanes at the intersection. So with all that said, we are recommending approval of a contract with, uh, Trans Systems for the $354,611.
Does anybody have any questions? I think this one is fairly, hopefully straightforward and we'll see how, uh, good they do in engineering that intersection.
Any challenge?
Yes, it is. Okay, hearing no comments or questions. I'll make the motion that we recommend a council resolution, uh, 20-68-R, authorizing execution of the preliminary engineering services agreement with Trans Systems for the Prairie Street and Wilson Street intersection improvements.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by Rosado. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. See, we leave that on a regular agenda just so we can talk about it because I think that's a big deal for the east side. Um, up next would be item number 13, Resolution 20-69-R, authorizing execution of a contract with Pretano Construction for the 2020 Ward One Storm Sewer Reconstruction. Gary, you want to take this one?
I'll take this one as well, yeah. Uh, bids were recently opened for this project, uh, Ward One. Pretano Construction, uh, does a lot of private work, um, a lot of commercial development, a lot of residential developments. We've worked with Pretano in the context of those projects, uh, for several years. So we're very comfortable with, with them. Uh, you can see on page two, um, we got a whole host of bids, 10, well, nine different bidders, um, and 10 counting the engineer's estimate. And the engineer's estimate landed right in the middle, so it was a good estimate and very competitive bids. And Andrea kind of went through the funding breakdown on the following page and I won't go through that in detail, but we are recommending then, uh, Ward Two contract to Pretano, for an amount not to exceed $1,205,154.50. And that is reflective of the bid price, plus the 10% contingency.
Okay, Mike, do you have any comments?
You know, no, we've been doing this for the last two years. You know, the, the, you know, a few years ago, Gary, there was a, a drawing that came out. It showed the extent of the flooding on the roadways and this is basically limiting that extent. Am I correct, Gary? The, the puddles that were left after a major rain are now a lot smaller. I don't think it's a great solution, but it is a solution. Uh, and I understand the reasons why we're doing that, this, you know, with, with the sizing of pipes and things. But the big thing that, that we're not addressing is really, you know, when we have these hundred year floods, we seem to have them yearly now, these hundred year events, is that the, the majority of flooding takes place in, in the residents' backyards and their homes. And, and we're really not addressing that. I know there's not much the city can do. I know, uh, the engineering has been out with people trying to help them, reconcile some of their issues, you know, whatever drainage they have. That is a big problem. I don't know if, I, I would have to assume it's, it's everywhere throughout the city. I just know that the drainage in, in Ward One, before it became Ward One, it was just a county area that, uh, they just had the drainage kind of built into the landscape. And over time, the drainage just disappeared with, with, with soil buildup and, and flower gardens and whatever. So I, I just know that's a big problem yet to, that's, it's coming on. And I have to assume it's throughout the, throughout the city. So it's something I think the city is going to end up having to deal with, you know, in, in the coming future because the, the rainy events are getting more severe and, uh, you know, it's, it's basically a quality of life issue for the residents. And so we might have to come to some meeting in the minds to help all the residents, however we do it. We talked about it a couple of years ago, possibly just, uh, you know, I don't know, bonding it out somehow. But I don't know the solution to it yet, but just putting that out there. So, but no, I, I understand where Gary's coming from and I have no issues with that. And I think, you know, it's, they're trying to get this area completed. So thank you for asking, Ellen.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, I'll make the motion that we recommend a council resolution, 20-69-R, authorizing execution of contract with Pretano Construction for the 2020 Ward One Storm Sewer Reconstruction.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by O'Brien. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, um, that can go on regular agenda. We skipped item 14 and we move on to item 15, ordinance 20-34, permitting wage and salary ordinance. Alderman, chance it. Okay there. Gary, Gary, you're still with us, right?
I am.
I was going to say if I wouldn't mind sending this, uh, pitching this over to you if you don't mind.
Oh, thank you. I had kind of presented in the memo, um, staff is recommending a change of state wage and salary ordinance, uh, to restore the manager of electric operations position, um, back to, uh, um, seeking to restore the, back to salary grade 21. The position was at that level, really since it was first created back in 2012. And, um, we had lowered it in an attempt to try and, uh, seek outside candidates, essentially at the new lower salary, which was not successful. And then I kind of laid out the organizational chart and our justification for why we feel it should be restored back to our salary grade 21, uh, to be consistent with other supervisors in the department, so.
Thank you. Does anybody have any, uh, comments?
I do. This is Joe.
Good.
I don't think the optics right now is a good time to make any salary adjustments upward. I don't see that now is a good time to make any hiring announcements anywhere. We just spent time looking through a spreadsheet, trying to identify potential ways we can delay spending because of decreases in revenue. I don't see this as any different than it should have, in my opinion, it should have been on that previous spreadsheet and I don't think it's the right time to do this.
I just want to point out that, um, the position that was on the spreadsheet is a new position in the organization and, um, this is a, a manager position of the crew in our electric utility. So it's, it's a very critical position for us to fill, even though we have gone a very long time without somebody in the position. It's, uh, it's very difficult for the organization to have this position not be filled.
One of the things that, that helps point me in this direction is, I think it's an arbitrary number and here's why I think that. We were told by the recruiting firm that our position, that our offer is too low, but nobody knows how low too low is. There's too many variables, they can't justify a finite number to tell us what it should be. I don't think we should have any increases in any salaries for anybody, anywhere, right now.
So actually the way that we determine the salary levels within the organization is Wendy has a very specific, um, criteria that she uses in order to make sure that a position has both internal equity and external equity. And that was the reason for the position being graded as it was for, uh, the previous incumbent in the position, given his, uh, the experience, responsibilities and, and capabilities. Wendy, maybe you want to speak to that a little bit more in terms of, uh, this is sort of just arbitrary.
Yeah, um, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. Yeah, the position is, we go through what's called a job analysis, um, for each position and review, um, the types of responsibilities for the job. And there, I think there's, off the top of my head, I think there's six categories we review, based on skill level, experience, um, the environment, um, the type of span of control, um, all of those different things and review that. And to ensure that internally we are, um, listing people correctly in our, in our organization. So, I mean, that's been done even before I came on board. This has been done within the city and we've continued to do that practice. So this position originally, um, back in 2012, um, when it was created, which actually was just a little bit before me, but was placed based off of that criteria. And then as Gary mentioned, um, when we had the retirement, as a cost savings, there was a hope possibly that we would be able to, to, um, find someone entering the field at a lower salary range. And as the memo mentioned, that we were unsuccessful in that.
This is Elliot, I'll, I'll just throw in as well, I, I couldn't agree with you more, Joe. I appreciate what you're saying, Wendy, I appreciate what the, what this position's uniqueness has been, you know, and, and difficulty in finding, uh, the right person. You know, the, the economic development position, we, we're saying we're not going to move forward with that for at least 60 days. I, I think it even, um, you know, is, is a bigger question than asked answered at that time in 60 days, given where we are right now. But, um, to entertain in, in this environment, the, the idea that we're going to bump up a salary level, you know, I, I just, I don't think that's the right approach. Right now, we need to look at how we can save money, how we can cut costs, not how we can, uh, you know, grow salaries or grow costs, so to say.
Dan?
Sir?
Yeah, I'm, I'm a no to bumping it back up to the 21 at this point for that very same reason. The, the, the salary ranges for everything are going to go through a new reevaluation for what is, what is the adequate salary and what isn't. And, you know, there's 26 million people that. And, you know, there's 26 million people that weren't available for this position now. But if there was anyone internally that would go for that position, that maybe didn't put in for it initially, this is a great developmental opportunity to make sure that is the one that they want, and they go to the 20, which it is, and then we reevaluate it at a later point.
So we have already conducted that internal search, and we did have candidates who did apply, but were deemed not ready for that position at this time, whether we pay the 20 or the 21. So that has already been exhausted.
Dan, Tony here.
You're just, so there's another, there's no, no one even at the 20, any long, 21, that would be internal, right?
No, the 20.
But at a 21?
The 21 is because we have an internal candidate with quite exceptional characteristics that would match the skill level of the incumbent who left the position at a 21. So it's a matter of not having somebody who is, this is the next step in their career, but somebody who is coming into the position already with the seasoned experience we think needed in order to lead this team, just as his predecessor.
Okay, I was confused.
There's another person in the organization that has those characteristics.
Okay, I was just confused, because it said there was only one internal that applied.
We had reviewed internal candidates, and some of which are, we feel they are not ready to step up into the position right now. We do have one candidate that we feel is ready to step up into the position, and would be willing to do so at the grade 21.
Hey, Dan. This is Michael. Wrong, I think this position is a, is a difficult position, and we, it's, it's not a position we want people learning on the job. Would that be a true statement?
It's, it's a utility that has, you know, separate from purchased power, which is $40 million, which this position doesn't deal with. The utility itself, the capital side of this is, you know, three, four, five million dollars every year that they're managing, and the ONM side is another $10 million a year that they're managing. So I prefer not to have someone learning on the job and managing that, those types of projects.
Another aspect of it is overseeing our lineman crews, who are a real source of pride for us, is the city and, and the electric utility, about being able to have them perform at the highest level in the event of outages, and for the maintenance of our system. And we really need a strong leader in that manager position for those crews.
Dan, Tony here.
What's up?
Yeah, I don't see this as bumping up someone. The position was never filled at, at the salary grade 20. We tried to save money. The last person that held that position was at 21. I see it as, from the last person that holds that position to the next person, should it remain 21? I don't see it as a bump up, I see it as a vital position, I see we have a great candidate for it. I don't, I don't have a problem with optics in it, because it's, you know, we're still paying at the same rate that we paid the last person to do that position. So we, you know, we tried to save by dropping it to 20, and we were not successful with it. The reality is, no one was ever paid at 20.
And Gary, just to put things in perspective, roughly what's the divide here?
4,000.
I'm sorry, you broke up, Dan.
I was saying, just to, just to put things in perspective, roughly how much money is the divide here? I do recognize that now is not a good time to be giving people raises, but I also do recognize that it is never an appropriate time to undercut somebody and not pay someone what they're worth, so I see both sides of the issue. If we're literally talking about a $4,000 divide, and one of my neighbors told me, and said, I can't believe you're giving raises to people, I believe it's nuanced, but I, I understand the hesitation.
The, the difference in percentage points between our steps, between our grades is about 5%. The actual dollar value is in this, okay?
Oh, sorry, Gary, I was just saying, it's four and a half percent between grades and, yeah, so, and then between steps, it's five and a half. So it equates to, between, if you're looking at the top, it equates to about $4,000 from one grade to the next.
I feel, I feel like I've had to defend bigger, not bigger, bigger ticket items than this. And in the spirit of making sure that we get the right person, I would not be opposed to moving forward, but I'll also defer to the will of the group. Dan?
Sir?
I guess I'll just chime in here, I feel like this is a position that we've talked about way too much over the last year or so, trying to figure out how we're going to fill this position. I feel like this is a position that is a key component of our electric utility, and this is something that we don't need to scrimp on. And I know it's, whether it's $4,000 or whatever the number actually is, this is something that has to be of the utmost importance, and I don't feel like we can keep leaving this open and on the backs of the rest of our staff to try to make up for not having somebody in that position. And, you know, you could say whatever you want to say about the optics, but this is a position that we've had for years in this department, and has gone unfilled for, you know, I don't know, Gary, is it beyond a year now?
May, early May, it'll work, May 3rd, so we're coming up on one year.
Right, at a year, and we haven't paid out any salary in this for a year. So I think this is the time where we have to make this happen, and realize that, you know, that if we're taking an internal candidate, the replacement for that candidate is not going to be hired immediately either, so you're going to have a net gain by not having paid out the other salary during that period to replace, you know, the, the, the other position. So I don't see that overall, in our budget, that this is going to change the budget at all if we move a position from a lower position in the organization up to the top position, or a higher position. So I think we need to do this, I think we need to move forward with it.
Well, Alan, I was just gonna say, along the lines of, the 20 was what was budgeted this year, and we do talk about the 4,000. Even in good times, that 4,000 was not budgeted, and that, that's just a simple fact. And it's, we've got to get away from the "it's only" and then insert a dollar sign. It's money that was above what was budgeted, it's got to come from somewhere. So if we're going to figure out where we're going to fund this, and we don't know, just in light of everything that we were cutting, easy way to do it, everybody give up their salary for one month. There's your $4,000 makeup. We'll put our money where our mouth is, fund that position.
This is Nick, if I can chime in. First of all, it's not just for, I mean, there's a multiplier effect here that goes beyond that, but, but I agree with Marty that it's not, those words, it's just, is tough, no matter what the level is, it's a moving target. But when you were, Laura, when, when you, all the department heads were evaluating the 60-day cuts, was this a position that was ever looked at in those discussions and said, you know what, maybe we can hold off 60 days, or is it that vital?
No. There, there's no way that we even considered holding off on this at all. But, I mean, so, looking into the future, that is one of the ways that an organization such as ours can look to hold down costs in the future, is to take a look at every time that there is a vacancy. Of course, you know, you ask, do you need to replace that vacancy at all? But secondarily, you ask, can we wait a period of time in order to rehire this position and, and get a savings in this year that way? And we've already done that here. So we've, quite a long time for this position, and we need it.
Okay. Yeah, I, I was legitimately asking that, because, you know, I go through this even with my own personal finances, like, boy, if I could, you know, some, sometimes expenses come up and you can't put them off.
Right.
Ideally, this would be perfect if we could wait 60 days, because I think there will be a, a new pool of, of workers available that weren't there when we first looked, but if we don't have the time, we don't have the time. So that's what I was just asking.
If I can address that, this is a municipal electric position. This isn't an accountant, or a finance person, or an entrepreneur. No one is going into the municipal electric field. It is almost impossible to find somebody in this field, and it's been almost impossible to find someone in this field for the last decade. But through the good times of the economy and the bad times, no one wants to be a municipal electric utility employee. It's a very small group of folks. So, so the notion that we'll be able to just go out and advertise and have 10 people submit resumes, I don't think is accurate. As far as waiting on this position, we waited a year. We've been wanting and working actively to try and fill this position. Monday was payroll. I, I spent an hour and a half on Monday morning looking at the lineman's timesheets, entering them into the ETF system, so we can get them approved. I mean, that, that, that's a job that the manager of electric operations used to do. Rahad spent considerable time last week dealing with the residents in regards to landscape restoration for an electric day. Again, a job the manager used to do. We've all taken on those jobs over the past year, and it is critical that we get someone in to, to take those, take those projects back, and have those things all done in a coordinated effort by one person.
The other thing that I'd like to point out is that the type of position in any organization, whether it is a public utility or a private utility, that this is an essential worker. These people aren't losing their jobs right now, their jobs are preserved. So I don't think that there's any more people out there in the pool of candidates than there were before this. In fact, there'd be less.
Hey, this is Drew. I think Gary hit on, kind of, the key thing is, not having this position filled is costing us money every single day in terms of productivity from staff members who are already paying for one job, but are having to divert time and resources away from their primary job to fill in and cover for this position. And I think the longer we leave it unfilled, and especially if we hold off on it thinking we're gonna do something down the road, it's, it's gonna keep costing us more and more money. And this is an expensive position not to have filled, even if we do have to change the grade, which, yeah, I, I think, in terms of what we're losing in productivity from other positions, we're actually coming out ahead, changing the grade and having it filled.
If I could just add to that, I think Drew makes an excellent point. And, you know, we, we're having trouble with our electric utility, you know, with, with Prairie State. We're always looking to see how we can tighten things up. Not that this position will do that, but, you know, we have a, we sell our electric utility as, as a fine utility, the best around, that if something goes wrong, we're there right away. You know, we have a good response to it. That's what, you know, this guy will be doing also, to, to fill this position. And we have to maintain the quality of, of our utility for that reason, because that's going to be our sale point to get businesses in, to come into our city. I don't think it's a whole lot of money, and, and as Drew said, we're, we're kind of losing money on the back end, when we have Gary who is, is filling in at times, and Rahad is filling in, filling in at times, where they'd be better served doing their, their own jobs. I, I'm all for, you know, approving this, and I'm, and I'm still saying, you know, we need to find money somewhere, but I'm, I'll approve this for sure.
Dan, are you there?
I am, I am indeed. So, does anyone have any direction?
Well, you know, I'm gonna make a motion, we recommend the city council passage of resolution 20-, oh, excuse me, ordinance 20-34, amending the wages and salary for non-collectively bargained employees' manager of electric operations salary grade.
Second.
Hey, with the motion and the second, is there any additional discussion?
I'd like to make a motion for an amendment.
Sir?
I move that the gap of the $4,000 is made up from the one-month meeting salary for Alderman.
Second.
I'm not sure I understand what that is.
I don't think.
Hold on, I will explain my motion. We get paid $400 per month, there's 14 of us, that's more than the 4,000 even after taxes.
Marty, if you wish to do it, I think you should. I am going to vote no on that, I don't think you can do that. I don't, I think that's, that's, you can't do that, so I'm going to vote no. I, I think you should do it though, Marty, I think that's a good idea on your part.
One, one other thing I'd like to add is, you know, we've gone a year, we've produced savings for a whole year by not filling the position. If we were not to, to put this back to 21, where it always was, where the, the person that held it last had, was at 21, we risk the other candidate, the internal candidate staying at, I believe he's at grade 19, I'm not positive, I'm pretty sure 19, but on step G, so he's all the way over on that. The likelihood of us being able to bring someone in on step one that's qualified and has experience on lane 20, we're going to shoot ourselves in the foot and cost, end up costing ourselves more.
Yep, and Alderman, Malay, I, I agree with you. I think in the private market, this position is, they would make a lot more. And I know that.
Yeah, and I'm not gonna say, I'm not, even when, you know, this is an essential job, there's not people losing their jobs that have the ability to run a municipal electric utility.
Got to agree with Tony on that.
Okay, so my expertise is not in Robert's rules, but we have a, a motion and a second, and then there was a motion to amend the motion, so I,
And there was a second.
How to handle that.
So we need to vote on the amendment first.
Yeah, we vote on the amendment first.
Okay, for O'Brien's motion, who made this second, for O'Brien's motion?
Malay, it's, or Drew, yeah.
And then Kim's, Allen's motion.
Can we vote on something like that to forfeit pay for another position? I, I'm not understanding this amendment.
Well, if, just for the sake of discussion, I, I understand the sentiment of, of where this vote comes from. There are a thousand things I feel passionate about. I don't necessarily know that setting the precedent of forfeiting the pay that I receive for my public services necessarily the route I want to go to, because I will absolutely spend more than $400 per month paying for things that I believe in. And I understand, we should probably just vote. We should probably just vote and figure out where the, where the temperature of the group is on, on this issue.
And that's why I fully understand that and I, but we are in unprecedented times where people are trying to figure out where they're going to get money from. And if we strongly believe in this position, we don't, we don't know where this money was going to come from initially. Even in good times, this was unbudgeted. So I'm saying if we truly believe that this is the course of action, I am willing to, I do not think it should go back up to a 21 at this moment in time. But if we do, you can take my money anyways.
Are we voting on the amendment?
Yes.
There was, and a second, unless, unless it is withdrawn, we should take a vote.
Not withdrawn.
Okay, and I guess we need a vote.
I'm just going to say very quickly, I'm not going to comply with it.
Yeah, I think that when you vote on it, it will need to go to, if, if in fact it passes, I think it would need to be reviewed by the city attorney.
Correct. It's not a final.
I think it's a dangerous slope. It's a very slippery slope to make some silly points, so do I stand with it.
I, I agree with you, Mike.
And I understand that too, but it's a, it's a slippery slope to keep unfunding positions that we don't have the pension for at this time, that we didn't calculate.
Yeah, that's
We want to start the path of the state.
We can, we can cover it with a city attorney, but if it fails, then we can just move on to voting for
We're, we're, we're coming up. We're coming up on 10:30 here. I'm going to go ahead and call the question.
Thank you.
Okay, so for the amendment, I had Callahan made that motion, the amendment to the motion with Knopf as the second.
Correct.
Okay, and then for the first motion, the original motion made by O'Brien, I have O'Brien making that and Malay seconding that motion.
Yes, or Drew.
Yeah.
Thank you. And then right now we're voting on the amendment made by Callahan, seconded by Knopf. Okay, Callahan?
Hi.
Meitzler?
Hi.
Malay?
No.
Youer?
Hi.
Theron? Theron?
Sorry, I was muted. No.
McKedden?
No.
Miller?
No.
Rosado?
No.
Beck?
No.
Knopf?
Yes.
Chantet?
No.
Darren?
No.
Wolf?
No.
And O'Brien?
No.
Motion failed four to 10.
I'll go ahead and call the question on the issue.
Okay, are we doing a vote call for O'Brien's original motion now?
Yes.
Okay. O'Brien?
Hi.
Callahan? Callahan?
No.
Meitzler?
No.
Malay?
Hi.
Youer?
No.
Theron?
Hi.
Fettin?
Hi.
Miller?
Hi.
Rosado?
Hi.
Beck?
Hi.
Knopf?
No.
Chantet?
Hi.
Darren?
Hi.
And Wolf?
Hi.
Motion carried 10 to four.
Okay, moving on to item number 16. Resolution 20 dash 62 dash R, authorizing execution of a professional services agreement for performing three-year waterworks system leak detection program with Emmy Simpson Company. Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Alan. This program, basically, it's been, we've been doing this for the last 20 some odd years. It's basically just trying to locate leaks in our water system. Pinpoint, they say, pinpoint the slightest underground water leaks, survey them, see where they're at and give, then they'll, our water department will kind of triage it and they'll go to the greatest leak first and work through it. It's going to take three years to do it. The cost is, excuse me. Trying to get through here, cost is $112,175.71 over three years with a 10% contingency. Any questions, concerns, comments? Gary, do you have anything to add?
I don't. This is actually a requirement from the state that we demonstrate that our loss, our unaccounted for loss is at a minimum. So we run this leak detection program to be able to identify and mitigate undetected losses. And that way we can be in compliance with the state.
Any questions? Anyone care to make a motion?
Make the motion that we recommend a council, resolution 20 dash 62 dash R.
Second?
Who's second?
Mike, Rosado.
Okay, motion by Wolf, second by Rosado. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed?
Nay.
Who is nay?
Knopf.
Okay, that'll go to the council 13 to one. We'll talk about that. Correct, Alan?
Yes, it was not unanimous.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, next up is item 17, resolution 20 dash 63 dash R, authorizing execution of professional services agreement for performing three-year waterworks system valve exercising and condition assessment with Pure Technologies U.S. Alderman O'Brien?
Okay, the, the goals of this here, it's the same thing, but the goals of this here is to, you know, ensure underground water valves are in good working condition. So a company will come out, they'll exercise the valves, they'll turn them. If they're normally closed valves, they'll turn them open. They're normally open valves, they'll, they'll close them and they do that a number of times just to make sure that the valves are in good working order. And if they're not, they'll alert us to what the issues are. The, they'll assess the condition of the valves. It'll take three years to do this, is a lot of, it's labor intensive. The cost of doing this is $27,170 annually, $81,510 over three years with a 10% contingency. Gary, do you have anything to add on this?
I don't. Typically, this is done in combination with testing fire hydrants, but in Batavia, our fire district does the, does the hydrant. So chief diving folks do the, our city, city fire department does the hydrant. So this is purely for the valves.
Right, and we've been doing this for a number of years now also, I believe, correct?
Yeah, water systems do these last two programs that we've talked about. That's basically since modern times. So going back to the seventies and sixties, they've been doing programs like the
Does anyone have any questions or comments? Well, Gary, I, I have a, a comment. I appreciate you including in the contract to pump out the valve vaults. A lot of times that's something that may get mixed, missed, and then there's an argument over who's going to pump it. I do have another question. Who turns our valves for us, Gary? I know they get tested now, but if someone, the contractor goes into our, into our town to work, who turns the valves?
During the course of construct, yeah. During the course of construction, Jeremy likes to have our guys turn all the valves. If we get a good rapport with the contractor and we know that, you know, he's a quality contractor and we build a level of trust with him, you know, I'll, I'll point to a project like, you know, Area 3 or Ward 1, where it's the same contractor that we've had, you know, for a couple of years in a row. We've worked with the person. Then, then we'll let that contractor operate a valve if he needs to. But, but I would say, to answer your question, Mike, 95% of the time, if not more, it's our guys that are operating our own valves. You generally don't want contractors operating your valves.
Right, yeah. Okay, good, I'm, I'm glad you said that. When was the last time we did this, exercised valves?
So we're on a three-year cycle.
Last three years.
Something that we do every year.
Okay. Anybody have anything else to add or question? Will anyone care to make a motion?
So move, Malay.
Second?
Second.
Who's that?
Wolf.
Wolf, okay, second by Malay, sec, I mean, motion by Wolf, by Malay, second by Wolf. Excuse me, all those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Any opposition? Okay, the eyes have it, 14 to zero. We probably put that on the consent agenda, Alan.
That would be fine, put that on consent.
Okay, thank you, Alan.
Thank you, Mike. Next up is project status, Laura? Are you there, Laura?
She's muted.
Now my microphone is working. You missed the best part. No, just kidding. So building permit activity is increasing with the warmer weather, despite the fact that the offices close. Almost every time I walk into the lobby area, there are papers in the, the bin for community developments that they'll come out periodically throughout the day and take back. So we do have a lot of activity there. We also have several zoning amendment inquiries and we anticipate that these are going to become formal petitions to rezone various properties for alternative uses, which is good news as well. In public work, concrete work is nearing completion of the 2019 Area 3 separation project and asphalt paving is anticipated to be completed by May 2nd, weather permitting. And then we're also continuing with landscape restoration efforts in that area. The underground storm and sanitary sewer work is going on along Main Street. And our outside vendor has completed cleaning and televising all sanitary sewers associated with the 2020 resurfacing program. The annual sidewalk and curb repair and replacement program is approximately 50% complete. And surveys mailed to all the residents and businesses along the Mahoney Creek Tributary. The purpose of the survey is we want to solicit thoughts and comments and ideas related to the future of the creek and the tributary. In the fire department there, I know that we're delaying for 60 days, the purchase of the engine, but still, there's a lot of work that goes into creating those specifications for that new piece of equipment. And so work is underway for that. And they're preparing to purchase the new air packs under the FEMA grants. And they are programming and installing new Starcom radios. Today, the Chamber of Commerce give them kudos in anticipation of the requirement for all residents to wear masks covering their nose and mouth if they are physically able and in situations where they're unable, unable to physical distance. The Chamber has come up with a program asking the community if they're able, they're among the maker community who are able to donate masks. We put a, we will have a box tomorrow placed next to the box where we've been collecting donations for our food pantry. And we're asking folks, because not everybody can afford a mask or has, because we know they're very hard to get on the open market these days. If people want to donate masks, they can donate masks. If people need a mask, this is a source for them to get a mask as well. We hope that it will be a resource for our food pantry, that they can offer masks to their clients who are there to pick up their food as well. And then I also wanted to just ask you about future meetings. This one went a little bit long. We had a lot on our agenda. There is still a lot of business as usual in addition to responding to the needs of the community that are special considering the pandemic. And so I would ask if, is having only four meetings per month, two city council meetings and two committee of the whole meetings enough? Or would you like to resume a schedule of four committee of the whole meetings as well?
I'm okay with us going back to having the, the four committee of the whole meetings now that we have this, as long as we can keep the agendas a little bit lighter.
Agreed.
Yeah, don't mind.
Agreed.
Blocked anyways.
And if there is a week where there just happens that we won't meet just to meet, you know, I'll make it worth time that if we can have manageable agendas and skip a week, we'll do that.
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, does anybody have any questions for Laura? Okay, if not, we'll move on to others. Does anybody have any others? Okay, next up then will be our adjournment and we will go into an executive session.
I move.
Howard will be here to set up the executive session and then we'll leave and we'll continue into executive session.
So I have a motion.
Get another email then for executive session?
Yes, you will.
Take about three minutes.
Okay.
And you should get an email with that link.
So I have a motion by O'Brien. Did I have a second?
Second, Baron.
Okay, Baron's second. All those in favor for adjournment?
Hi.
Hi.
See you in a couple of minutes.
Okay.
Alan, I, I won't be able to join the executive session, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks, Ken.
Have a good evening.
Good night.